Five thirty, I will call the study session to order. That's all I got mine. There we go. Yeah. It's five thirty. I will call the study session to order. And we will start off with public comment. Anyone who has a public comment, you can approach the lectern and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
All right. Hello, my name is Landrea Johnson. I live at two-two-eight Trowbridge Street, Alleghen. And I'm here today to voice my support for redoing the Cutler Street parking lot. There are a few other business owners and active community members here as well to show their support. I really hope that we can make this project happen. I feel like we would be missing out on an opportunity with a big chunk of the project to be funded and the benefit of how many people this parking lot, it's used by, the benefit is really, it's beneficial to a lot of downtown, I should say. Both businesses, patrons, things like that. So I just wanted to say that there are a lot of business owners that could not be here today, but they wanted to voice their support as well. So hopefully you'll take into consideration that this is a dilapidated parking lot in the middle of our brand-new downtown. Seems a little silly maybe to let it continue rotting, for lack of a better word, or crumbling in the middle of all this brand-new infrastructure. And I just hope that hopefully we can redo it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. I'm Piper Rab. I live north of the city. I'm not a city resident or at all, but I am speaking on behalf, my, I live, my address is three-zero-one-three hundred-twenty-second Avenue, Alleghen, Michigan, Allen County, Allen Township. I'm working for Curtis Clark. He's a graduate of nineteen eighty-three's Allen Public Schools. And he's running for the US House Representatives. He's gathering signatures. He has two weeks to get four-hundred-and-fifty signatures to complete a thousand, to be on the ballot by August sixth for voting, to be considered on the ballot. He does plan to be, Tommy's gonna be here. He'd like to speak. He was twenty-five years in the Army and he was a broadcast engineer in the Iraq War in charge of radio and communications, special communications for the, for the war. He came to my church yesterday. He was amazing, spoke from the heart, and he has a lot to say. He's got a lot of information. And what caught my attention and brought me here to stand behind him, not only did I go school with him, and but he is telling that under the Biden administration, United Nations Council, or United Nations Green Plan, or whatever it is now, they're spearheading to, through Michigan State Government and also federal government under Biden, to buy up, and Allen County's a target for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand acres of farmland that claim eminent domain. They want to take, this is what is, he's telling me, they can take eminent domain, they pay pennies on the dollar, take your farm, your land, and they want to build a solar farm through President Biden and the United Nations. And if they think they can do it, they think, I've heard Allen County has, they, has a weak governing system. They think they can take over. I don't know, but it caught my attention. The Carnes live across the street, Cooks live down the street, and I'm surrounded by farms. And I think, I worked at Allen Public Schools twenty-six years. I've seen the poverty. And I'm, I'm just here for Allen, Allen County. I live here and want to protect what you have in the farming industry, the farmers. God bless, they're all over the place in Allen County and also Van Buren County, Lower Ottawa County, and Western Kalamazoo County is what he represents in the fourth district for the US House Representatives. So I have two seconds. Thank you. He shouldn't be here tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name's Ben Otis and I, yeah, I'm part of the community. So I understand that you guys are potentially considering moving ahead with some renovation for the parking lot, which is back here, which is used by a lot of businesses. I think that's fantastic. I'm glad to hear that that's being considered. I think it's a great continuation of the momentum that we have here as a community in fixing up downtown and continuing to see the, the assets maintained and revitalized in such a positive manner. So I guess I just wanted to share that I'm very happy to hear that that's being considered and that there's, even in addition, it sounds like there's some, some good grant money available that would help pave the way for that. Didn't mean for that to be a pun with paving, but, but anyway. So anyway, I just wanted to express my support for that. And again, just say that I'm very encouraged to see this continuation of so much positive redevelopment happening in Alleghen. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Curtis Clark. I'd like to thank Piper for the warm welcome. I appreciate it. We do have a situation that's not in the favor of we the people. That's developing in Michigan at the moment. There is an agenda with the United Nations, Sustainable Development Goals, Agenda Twenty Thirty. They are, our property taxes on our homes are being increased five percent every year. So that by twenty thirty, our property taxes will have gone up forty percent. This is not sustainable for homeowners, especially the middle class. And as, one of the things I'm very curious is what are some of the things that the city is, is contemplating as far as more affordable home ownership for our children and our grandchildren and preserving the American dream for future generations? The other thing that I found out was that there's an attack on our critical energy infrastructure here in Michigan. They do want to convert a lot of our farmland that we use to grow crops on. They want to convert it to solar farms. The original estimate was two-hundred-thousand acres in the state of Michigan. According to the analytics, it's more like three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand acres. They want this goal implemented by twenty-thirty, twenty-forty timeframe. One of the things that they're doing is for green energy, carbon, to reduce the amount of carbon emissions, is they want to eliminate the Campbell Power Plant. It's, it burns off of coal. There's almost a billion dollars put into it not that long ago. Supposed to be good until twenty-forty. Well, they want to tear it down May of twenty-twenty-five. They have nothing to replace it with. Supplies electricity to a million West Michigan customers. Without that, our energy grid, especially in the winter of twenty-twenty-five, is going to be at a critical situation. A lot of lives could be in danger. We need to do something to preserve critical energy infrastructure. I told, I was told that the Alleghen Dam, we might be losing it. I hope we are not. I, I heard that the city of Alleghen used to own the Alleghen Dam until nineteen sixty-nine, which was turned over to Consumers Energy. Concerned, Consumers Energy has taken bids for the, the Caukens Dam. And at the last meeting, it was asked, could you sell it to a corporation from China? And they said, well, there's nothing to prevent it from being sold to China. So that's definitely something we do not want to happen. We need to preserve our critical energy infrastructure and make housing more affordable for homeowners, primary homeowner, owner residences. So I'd like you to take that consideration, see what we can do to work in that direction to help we the people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Steve Tibbetts, and I live in the township, but I'm also on the DDA. And wasn't asked to be here as a DDA spokesperson, but as a member of it. I just wanted to let you know that the DDA, I think you're aware of it, prioritized the parking lot as probably the number-one project that we saw as beneficial to the downtown area. And when we were told that it may not happen, there was a lot of disappointment on the DDA. So I think most of the people on the DDA represent not just downtown, but the city as well. And I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that the DDA has prioritized that as probably by far one of the best projects for the downtown area. And I guess just want to encourage strong consideration of making that happen because it is in horrible shape and needs to be fixed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Lyle. I reside at seven-zero-five Marshall Street here in the city. It's the home just to the right and in back of the Robinson Manor Event Center. And I apologize that I don't come in to, to praise you for actually many things that we have to be proud of here and actions that you've taken that we're fully in favor of and glad that you participate. So thank you for that. However, this has to do with the removal of the summer adjustment to the city's sewer water bill. To my shame, I've not noticed it until now because we're on an auto payment plan where it just gets billed to my credit card. And, and so we just, I just gloss over it month-to-month and just pay the bill and assume that it's going to be, you know, what has been typical. However, that, so that, that removal of that, of that summer adjustment has, has taken place. And the first time that I noticed it was when I got some to come in to pay my bill at City Hall here because the bill was seven-hundred dollars for one month last year. And it couldn't, I couldn't charge my credit card that amount. So I had to come and pay in two installments on the credit card. So thus I was notified, you know, this is going on. You know, some of my bills now looking bad during the summer months are four-hundred dollars, seven-hundred-seventy dollars, five-hundred-fifty-five dollars to irrigate my lawn, which we really take pride in our home there. It's in the historic district. We abide, have always abided by, you know, those requirements to maintain a historic property and take pride in that. And we want it to look good. I think Marshall Street needs all the attention it can get. We would like a green yard, but I can't sustain with four kids and colleges and weddings. You know, certainly seven-hundred-and-seventy is a spike. I don't anticipate that. But that's even diswatering a portion of my yard. So I don't know if there's a remedy you could consider, but I think it fights against the impetus to try to maintain the, the aesthetic of Marshall Street and our communities when, you know, I would have to sustain a water bill like that to irrigate the lawn. So I hope that perhaps there's some kind of remedy so I can get back to watering and, but thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kaylee Gratz. I reside at one-six-eight North Street. And I am also speaking on behalf of many of my peers and friends in support of the renovations to the parking lot right here downtown. Just walking through it today, when I was running around doing J.C. work, there was, I noticed that there's parts of it that's crumbling. There's big potholes in it. And it really looks out of place compared to the rest of the beautiful downtown streetscape that we have. So just voicing my support for moving forward with the parking lot project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? All right. And we will move on to item number three, roundtable discussion amongst council members. Does anyone have anything for roundtable?
Only one thing. Dealing with the summer rates that we got rid of, I know that we're also allowed now to have a second meter with no RTS on it for specifically for watering the lawns. And then that'll also remove the sewer portion. So you'll only pay for the water. So that, that's, that's how we came to that compromise when we did that. And I still think it's a good compromise because the summer reduction wasn't necessarily always for just watering the lawn. So it was a way to make sure we account for all the water and not just reduce it kind of just based on a calculation. But that would be my recommendation is to get a second meter.
May I speak to that? I, I was told that, and so I had homework come. And I give me an estimate for rerouting my spigots to include now sentient runs to those spigots that I use for outdoor. And that came to twenty-five-hundred dollars for my home. So it really wasn't an option. Because now I have, you know, from the meter now, I have to run out new lines.
I don't know, anything, I don't have anything else really for roundtable today. So anybody else?
I do. Turn to my handicap access, oh, I'm sorry. I was noticing and brought to my attention about handicap accessibility along Water Street. There is only at one end by Minnie's to get to our plaza, the new plaza, which is beautiful and lovely and was used well today. Anyways, there's only one handicap accessibility to that whole stretch up and down there. And that's right by Minnie's. Yeah. Looking at, and then also along Locust Street. I've had a couple complaints on that. There, there is on each end, but nothing in the middle. So anybody parking in that, you know, it's pretty difficult for someone who maybe is handicapped to go from one end to the other end, back and forth to the middle. I think there should be something in there, but that's for discussion here.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
Did you notice that on Water Street?
Not, I should, I should have. A lot of that is because we're parallel on the one side and we can't handicap a parallel spot because that doesn't work.
Right there at the end of the Minnie's, there's no parking?
Yep, because of fire hydrant in the corner. I know that that got restricted quite a bit. I know the parking lot between Shandor's and, well, that parking lot right there, that one has a couple park, a couple handicap in it. I thought at one time we had some on the angled side.
But that's on your side, Peter, not on the other side, on the Minnie's side.
And then is there any in the parking lot there behind the old City Hall?
Nope.
There should, there should be. Yeah, there, there's one in the parking lot behind the old City Hall, all the way down by the old City Hall. Not near that area. Two things I'll just mention, Councilmember Morgan. We, we'll look into this for sure.
Yes, please.
When the downtown streetscape project was done last year, there were the appropriate or the legally required amount of handicap spaces. Staff has received, you know, inquiries from people for more spaces. We've received inquiries to relocate one space from Locust, across the street from Minnie's, and put it in front of four-oh-one Hair Works because there's a certain person gets their cut there every four weeks. And there's never a handicap space for them when they come in for their hair appointment. Mid-block.
But you're not, are you talking about handicap parking or are you talking about handicap ramps?
Ramps to get onto the sidewalk, not so much a parking.
Not so much parking, but ramps. Okay, yeah.
Getting onto the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for us to incorporate a ramp.
I think we discussed that already going from...
There's nothing along Water Street on that side.
Yeah.
There's one, of course, where the little tree outcrop is. But we, I think we discussed putting one by Joyology to go across from the plaza across to there. And I think that was something that we were in discussion. Well, I know we talked about it at a roundtable in the past.
Yeah.
Right there. So it would be right along where Minnie's is and would cut across because there's already a sidewalk cut in front of Joyology. And it would just be connecting that sidewalk cut to the other side. So that would help that, help that parking lot be more accessible to the plaza, I think, would be something.
The plaza area, there is nothing there.
Yeah, that's what we're saying is that we would have to put a sidewalk cut there.
You're talking about a walk-through there?
Yeah, because there's a receiving side on the Joyology side. There's a sidewalk ramp right there because there's a handicap spot at the very end of the angled parking.
Yes, I always park next to it.
And so there's...
So it would like, it would line up well to put one directly across from that, which would be right behind Minnie's, near the service entry door.
That's what I was talking about.
Yep. We, like I said, we're looking at, I mean, clearly everything has a cost.
Sorry, I didn't make myself clear on that. It was the accessibility to the sidewalk, not so much the parking.
And I was just sharing with what I've heard from the residents, as I've seen them out on the street. And they grab my back of my collar and say, hey, young mister, let's talk.
There's actually three handicap behind the old City Hall total.
There was three?
There's three.
There's three right now? Okay, thank you. We'll look into that for better connection on Water Street.
Thank you. Anything else for roundtable?
Yeah, I wanted to thank council for the support for the J.C. Park Bridge design that we talked about at the last meeting. I'm wondering if we can move that up and get it started right away. We talked about a fifty-thousand-dollar allocation. And I'd like to propose that we put that back to public spaces and let them use that money to come up with a good design. But I'd like to focus just on the bridge. I'm wondering what council thinks of that.
I think we're discussing it being in a future year's budget. It's just which budget. Are you talking to put it in the upcoming budget or are you talking this fiscal budget still, which ends in July?
Yeah, right now, like just get it started. They meet Wednesday night. Let's get it on their agenda. Hey, we want you guys to look at designs, come up with real plans for the bridge so we don't have as many surprises. And maybe even get like a few options. Like here's an option where we just repair it. Here's an option where we replace it just for pedestrian use. Here's an option where we replace it for whatever. Range of options, full plan, just the bridge. Don't get into the rest of J.C. Park. Just focus on getting that bridge done. And I'm, I'm proposing send it to public spaces so they can take the time. Folks in there know how to operate projects. They've been successful before. It just needs a place to go and get work done on it.
So you think that public spaces would welcome that?
I'm sure they would. They're, because they were the ones that initiated that to begin with at the very start of it. Tom Hunter did that, worked for the grants and so on. Yeah, I, I have the agenda right here for public spaces. And I'm sure that can be amended and put that on there.
Should we go ahead with a motion tonight then and just allocate fifty-thousand dollars, up to fifty-thousand dollars for designs for the J.C. Park Bridge?
Yeah, we'd just have to do that during our regular session, right? We don't think we can do a motion here.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, does, does anybody have a, any?
Well, it's definitely not in this year's budget. So that's my main issue is we didn't budget for it and we were discussing putting it in next year's. I'd be fine saying when we do that, it starts after July. So it's not like it's, they can start looking at it and coming up with ideas. But to actually allocate funds at this point, I don't think is necessary. Not going to be able to do anything with those funds for a while while they're discussing it.
I, I mean, if, I'm not sure there's a good justification for waiting until July. I mean, it's fifty-thousand dollars. We can move that easily into this budget. If you feel like the spend needs to be after July.
I'm thinking that's probably where the spend's going to be anyways. So that's where I'm going. It would be more a next year's budget. And that's just, and we have our budget sessions coming up this week, so.
Well, the first time they would talk about it would be the May meeting. That would only give them one other meeting to, to...
To June. But it's talking actually spending money. That money's probably not going to be spent this year.
They're not going to, they're not going to get to spend it.
And they usually wouldn't be able to spend it. It would still come back to us for the spend because they're just an advisory.
Yeah.
So it would be asking them to start looking at it, reviewing it, coming up with ideas. But it, they really aren't a spending body. They don't get to spend money.
Yeah.
They don't have that authority.
So if we, we could make a motion to kind of task them to take this project on, Dave? And then if that money was set, put into the next fiscal year budget, the twenty-twenty-five budget, is that, does that get to where, get you to where you want to be?
Sure.
Is that good?
Yeah.
I, I would, I can definitely get behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Yeah, thank you. Anything else for roundtable? All right, nothing from me. So we will move on to item number four, discussion regarding the future of the Hubbard Street parking lot.
Thank you, Mayor. We put this on tonight's agenda because it's been discussed a couple times. As mentioned during public comment at the DDA level. We've also discussed this at the Downtown Lowdown with merchants that meet the first Tuesday of every month at eight o'clock in this room to just talk about what's going on in the downtown. And we've discussed it a couple times at the city council level. So we invited Dan Donbass from Abin Marsh, the city's engineer of record, to be here to talk about where they are so far in their design process. As council will recall, earlier this year, you approved, you know, a purchase order with Abin Marsh to do the design and the bidding of this project. And we're kind of still in the middle of putting that stuff together. But what I'd like to do is just give some background information of how we got here. I'm going to show some images on the screen to show the current condition. The majority of these images were captured today. So what you see here is just, you know, some asphalt separation, you know, from the curbing in the left-hand picture, some severe crack, cracks forming in the pavement on the right side and potholes occurring. This is just outside one of the main drainage structures. Some of you will recall when we do get a rainstorm through here, this is a parking lot that does flood because the drainage is, you know, inappropriate in this area. This shows on the left side, an existing new bench that the city purchased with our trash cans. This is coming off the Trowbridge Street. That is an uneven sidewalk in that area. We have had people, you know, trip in this area where the sidewalk is uneven. Across the street is, the picture on the right side is the bench across the street next to the Cutler Street parking lot. This shows the treatment with the fence and the stone columns that we'd like to duplicate on the other side of Trowbridge. Um, this shows the treatment with the fence and the stone columns that we'd like to duplicate on the other side of Trowbridge. To start, you know, reinforcing that identity that we have downtown. This shows on the left-hand side, the sidewalk, the new sidewalk and the bench next, uh, this is along, uh, the north side of Hubbard Street. And this shows the old landscaping that used to be there, as well as on the right side. You know, this landscaping bed, the railroad ties, railroad timbers, the brick seat wall, it's deteriorating. You know, it, it's time to be replaced. Um, we are going with a stone look, not a railroad timber look. This shows another area in this, in the parking lot where we have drainage issues after rainstorms. And then as well as you see some curb separation from the sidewalk. More images of the parking lot and its condition. This is the alleyway or the pedestrian walkway that runs along the west side of the buildings. Um, that front locust and their back entrances are on Hubbard or along the Hubbard Street parking lot is what we refer to. One thing we want to point out here is currently there are two steps to get into those back entrances. You can see the pathway, then you hop onto what's called an extended concrete curb. And then you take another step into the back entrances of the doors. That concrete curb is not wide enough for a landing area. Correct, that is not our property, but our residents and our visitors do shop there. And it is a area that historically has been used by the public. And up to, two years ago, we, or a year ago, we used to snowplow that alleyway. Um, it used to have delivery tra- traffic down there as well. Um, so while on paper it is owned by the private property, it has been a public asset. Here's a list of businesses that abut this parking lot. So these are the businesses where this is the main parking lot in the downtown, as well as for these businesses. Continuing, talking about the businesses that, you know, are on Hubbard Street or, you know, within, you know, across the street from there, so. You know, in, in addition, we have twenty-one surrounding residential units that utilize this parking lot. Um, this is a parking lot that is central to the downtown. It serves the downtown businesses and it serves the majority of the downtown residents. And then Dan, I'm gonna ask you to come on up to the podium if you don't mind. This is what I'm gonna call the conceptual mock-up of where we are starting with this, uh, plan. Dan's gonna be able to talk through it. Parker's gonna grab the mouse and use it as a pointer to highlight what Dan is pointing to.
All right, just, uh, the overall rundown, um, Trowbridge at the top, Hubbard at the bottom, your screen. Uh, north is generally to the upper right. The, uh, project entails the. Removal by crushing and shaping of the asphalt surface. Uh, that will recycle that material. Uh, to be supplemented with some additional aggregate base and then reutilized as the foundation for a new asphalt surface. In doing so, um, as Joel discussed there on the right-hand perimeter of the lot. Would be elevating or, you know, the current plan would be to elevate that sidewalk along those, uh, back of those businesses. To eliminate one of the two steps there, that, that extended curb or gas curb, if you wanna call it that. Would be, uh, would bring the sidewalk up flush with that, uh, to reduce the. Trip hazard or what, what have you, just make it simpler for people to get into the rear of those buildings. We would not, we would actually leave the existing curb where it is and just raise the sidewalk elevation up. That existing curb has a number of gas services and electrical services that are tied to it. And so in order to kind of right-size the project, be efficient with the use of funds. We would just elevate the remainder of the, the alleyway up to that level. The, uh, working around that easterly side up to the north, we have some. Dumpster enclosures, relocation of HVAC for the Regent Theater. In that area, we'd also be looking to eliminate, there's a existing wood pole right in the middle of that walkway, right about there or that. Where they're hovering right now. We'd be looking to eliminate that in favor of a couple of, uh. Lights that would be similar to those used on the streetscape project, so those, uh, pedestrian scale lights. In that area, uh, that, I guess I'm gonna call it the alleyway heading out to Trowbridge. We're looking at placing approximately two of those lights in that area to give that some better illumination. Uh, working around to the west, up the back of this building, uh, we'd have a, just a fairly simple. Uh, sidewalk running along the back edge of this building. Uh, that way, all the doorways that are exiting onto that existing alley would, would continue to have a, an egress-ingress point. Uh, and then the remainder of that would be, uh, replaced with a, a softer material, uh, some sort of green landscaping. Something that's gonna be shade tolerant because of the amount of shade that's in that air, in that alley adjacent to the building, but. Some kind of ground cover. That's something that we're gonna be, our landscape architects will be working with the city staff to. Come up with something that's attractive but low maintenance. Working around the s- the south, again, back to Hubbard, we'd be re, uh, developing the, um. Frontage there to be consistent with the streetscape, complimentary of that. What's shown there right now, but, you know, subject to discussion are a couple of columns in each one of those green areas. With that fencing, that would be consistent with what's, uh, the application at the Cutler parking lot entrance off of Trowbridge. And then a few trees and, uh, landscape plantings in those, in those areas to soften things up and. Again, kind of pull together the streetscape project that was done last year with, uh, this new parking lot. Uh, one thing that's not, uh, shown, it's not featured, at least not featured in this image, would be some drainage improvements. Joel highlighted those. Uh, there's not a whole lot of, uh, drainage facility out there. There's one right kind of the confluence area where, yeah, thanks Parker for that gesture. But, uh, that's at the low point and the, the piping that heads from that structure out to Trowbridge is fairly small. Um, that would be replaced, upgraded, and we'd place, uh, an additional structure. Or two in that area just to provide some redundancy in inlet capacity, and that way, uh, there'd be, uh, air would be less prone to pounding water during heavy rain events. It's it in a nutshell. There's some ov- uh, overhead. Work, uh, undergrounding of overhead, that's been, the scope of that's been in discussion with city staff. Joel, you wanna go into that or?
Yeah, so, um, what we wanna do real quick is, in your packet, you guys received the full breakdown of the budget at the high level. You know, this is a roughly an eight hundred thousand dollar project, to- total cost is where we are right now. That includes about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to lower the wires that cross horizontally along the parking lot. Not the wires that go vertically or parallel with that alleyway. So there's some questions on whether or not we really get a big impact by removing part of the wires. In addition, we have received a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the federal government for this project. And we are still waiting to hear on a ninety-nine thousand dollar grant from the US Department of Agriculture. So when you look at eight hundred and eight thousand, we take two fifty off that, that gets us down to, you know, five fifty. So right now, you know, we're spending about sixty cents on the dollar of city money to pull this project off. We're also utilizing several. We're u- we're utilizing funds from the DDA fund balance as well. I believe that's like at seventy thousand, I think is what was in the budget for that. So we're working to reduce the impact on the general fund budget as much as we can. Um, as mentioned, or as shown in the pictures, this is part of the infrastructure the city has to maintain. And eventually, we're gonna have to, you know, fix the drainage, fix the surface parking lot. And, you know, help complement, you know, the work that's been done on the streetscape. And right now, you know, we can do it sixty cents on the dollar. In three years, we probably won't have that money. We'll be paying a hundred percent for it, and as we know with inflation and cost of construction, it only gets more expensive down the road. So what we wanted to do tonight is just have the conversation with council again. You know, we have more designs Dan's working through on the. Final design that's gonna, the construction drawings, I will go out for bid. Um, and I wanted Dan to be present this evening, just in case there's comments or questions from council itself about this project.
I had a couple of questions. One, this isn't our worst parking lot downtown currently. Water Street is much further worse in condition for the surface. Um, I wanna try to make sure we have money to take care of that in the future, as well as our other major five hundred thousand dollars a year that we wanna spend to maintain our roads. When I was looking through the high level of the cost on this, the hundred and fifty just to underground one power line that's so far up in the air. That there's no truck will ever hit it. I don't think it's really worth a hundred and fifty thousand. And then I also see we're just gonna spend sixty thousand dollars on columns, so we could save ourselves two hundred and ten thousand dollars just getting rid of those two items alone. Bringing the overall down to four hundred and eleven thousand dollars rather than six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Then minus our two hundred and fifty that we've got for the federal grant. Drops that down to. I think it was one sixty-one. I have to look at that, let me see. So I'm just looking that we're gonna have to, if anything, at least put that in, on our bidding contracts as an optional item. To start pulling some of these things out to make this project capable of doing it. And having enough money and not pulling from a general fund to have enough money to, in the future, think that we're gonna have to grind and fill the Water Street parking lot minimum. We're gonna have all of our streets that we've been, already been discussing for weeks about spending five hundred thousand dollars a year on those. We, we can't get, you know, necessarily everything we want and be able to also still have money to do the other things that need to get done. So. Not necessarily opposed to redoing it and getting the drainage and other things fixed, but I wanna make sure we're not overspending for it. And eight hundred K for a parking lot seems a lot for me, and to just save two hundred and ten by just doing those two simple things. Is.
What the demo costs is.
And one that I have to look back, I'll have to remember. But yeah, the, and then we're talking stolen columns at sixty thousand. We're still trying to figure out how to get stolen columns repaired out at the cemetery. And that's been going on for. Four, four years, two, three years, we've been discussing it, had it out to bid multiple times. So I'm just looking, if we're gonna do it, let's try to organize the bid in a manner that allows us to pull some of those things out.
Yeah, and we, we can do that most definitely at the additions. Uh, the only pushback, you know, I'll do mayor pro temp hands, is on the, the stone columns. That is a design, uh, additive that we've done on the Cutler Street parking lot across the street from us. As well as on, you know, the fencing and the seating wall. I mean, to keep that continual, continual feel and look would be important. And we've received compliments from people who have visited the city, uh, just last week, we hosted some people from Bridgman, Michigan. Uh, they do storytelling and placemaking, and it caught their eye. They go, that amount of detail in your public spaces makes your town so much more attractive. But those are easy things we can put as, you know, additives or addendums, optional bids, I think is the alternatives.
And then we still have the alleyway and the right-of-way that we need to get, and have we secured that?
So working with those property owners to secure the. What we call our maintenance, our construction, maintenance and ingress-egress easements over those. We did the same thing on the Cutler Street parking lot. We've talked to a handful of the property owners. There's four of them or three of them in the audience. Or in this room right now. Uh, we received only positive responses from them saying, yes, they're willing to, you know, give us those easements. Most of them are shocked to find out they actually own it. And we're like, well, you do.
So, yeah, that's my main thing is we can try to optimize this, get this, because when we do that, you get it down to like between sixty-two thousand. If you're not taking in contingencies of city costs to about a hundred and forty thousand when you are taking in contingencies. If you use, I think you used about a nineteen percent contingency going by the percentage increase that I've seen on it.
Yeah, there'd be other professional services during, uh, construction.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, going by the amount that was recommended by the city of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar contingency. That was about nineteen percent of the project cost.
Yeah.
So I, I use that same nineteen to come to where those were.
And then just real quick about Water Street, fully, uh, I think staff agrees, Water Street is in poor condition as well. The reason we focus on this parking lot is the number of businesses that are adjacent to this. And the fact that it is, it is central to the downtown, uh, positive to going with this project when we bid it out. We will have a crush and shape cost for this, that I'm sure we could just multiply or extrapolate for, get a good understanding of what Water Street would cost at that time as well. So we'll have fresh data, new data.
Of course, we, I see the EV charger on there and that's still a problem over.
That's going away. So this is a very, very old plan that we started off with, that Parker manipulated. So that EV charger in this lot isn't being striped for that.
I don't mind having the utilities capable being there or conduit being laid at the time of the construction, so it can be. But so far, we've had no luck finding anybody to install those, so. But I, I don't mind like, oh, we have the conduit here. It goes back to where the transformers are. It's empty. You can fill it if some, someone wants to actually do it.
And I'll touch based on the electrical vehicle charging stations for Cutler Street later on in the meeting.
So I, uh, I would say the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for burying the lines. I would love to get those lines out of there, but that, that price just seems so, so large to me. And that's the, the price of a, of a nice house to, to bury those lines. And so I, I think that having that as a, uh, structured in that bid, that we could strike that. When the time came, I think that would be good. I would push back on the columns. I, I know that they can be a problem. But with how we've started the rest of the downtown, I don't wanna start to, uh. Nickel and dime, not that's sixty thousand dollars nickel and diming, but, um, I wanna finish what we started. At least here in the main downtown area, and if, if there's a way to, to make. Maybe I see that in the drawings, there's, there's three sets of that fencing. Maybe we don't need columns and all of that. Uh, and all of those, uh, planters or whatever they're gonna be. But, um, I, I don't want, I, I would hate to eliminate all of those out of there because I think it creates a continuity in our downtown.
One thing I think could be helpful, the decision making here, is if we had that comprehensive maintenance plan we've been talking about for a few years. And we could see where this parking lot, other streets, other parking lots fit in, and we could start to make decisions about priority. Um, kind of upfront every year, um, rather than coming up with these things sort of mid-year and getting the grant already. And, um, I understand there's a lot of momentum behind this, but I think that full maintenance plan, because there are a lot of assets. The city's responsible for maintaining would help us make better decisions as a council.
Would let us know what we're talking about, uh, give us more, more information.
Correct, and we could start to develop a plan that we can stick to, that even if we come up with emergency issues that need to be dealt with. We could integrate those and understand what is it we're deprioritizing, what's moving down the list so we can move this up the list. I, I don't think, I think we lack that right now.
Only other one I see is that proposed new curb cutout between City Hall and Positive Options. Only concern on actually doing an improvement on the street side there is that those sidewalks are gonna need to get replaced. We have no curbing along there. And, uh, you know, so it's, it's just sloped down. It's like, what are we gonna do there? And it's, it's something that's just gonna be ripped up because when we go and actually do the curbing and redo the sidewalks there when we finally get to that street. Oh, it's between, yeah, between City Hall and the courthouse, so coming out between. It's the City Hall and Positive Options, yeah, that sidewalk there.
You're just talking about this part?
I'm talking specifically the sidewalk where it enters the road because the road there is not improved and. I'm like, oh, is that really worth the time to replace when we're gonna be going in the future, having to redo? when we're gonna be going in the future, having to redo that road and those sidewalks? And...
So you wanna just end it here?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Just thinking of what I see out in the...
Anyone else have any thoughts or comments on this project?
My thoughts, I mean, it affects what used to be my business very, very much. The parking lot needs work. Nickel and dime, the term that you use, Roger, I agree with that. I don't want it to be nickel and dime, I want the thing done and done correctly. Overhead wiring, yeah, it, it's, doesn't look nice. I would like to see that out of there. It doesn't all need to be out of there, but some of it, the majority of it. I'm glad to see that that EV things aren't in there. Handicap parking in there. Ramps to get onto the sidewalks?
Yeah, so the hashed area between the two handicaps, uh, that's gonna have a dubbed-down ramp, correct, Dan?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, to be ADA compliant, it has to, I believe, thank you.
Actually, the way, so which one are we talking about? Yes, that one, yeah, okay.
That one will.
The other one, the other hashed area with, near the, the E, what's indicated as EV right now is not...
Yeah. And, and then up by the loading zone?
That's, I was just gonna discuss.
We're probably gonna have to rework, uh, dubbed-down to that loading zone. We'll have to look at the geometrics in that area. As I mentioned, Dan's doing the final designs. And then up there, we're gonna probably ha, we'll have to have a dubbed-down to that area as well.
Currently, there's a hump right there that was put in to get into the back of the Regent.
Correct, and to stabilize that wall, that's staying.
What was that for?
That's, that was also to stabilize the wall of the Regent when we were putting the door in.
That would probably have to be redone.
Nope, the extended of the project stops right where the cursor is.
So you're gonna be like that?
Yeah, it's almost gonna match the height, is what Parker just whispered in my ear.
If we, if we raise up, if we're, if we do raise up to eliminate the step on the east side of that alley, that, that one panel that slopes up could be redone with less slope. Because we're talking about potentially raising the parking lot a bit to remove those steps along the alley.
I'm sure the engineer will take care of that.
Mm-hmm.
The entrance on Troll Bridge, I don't see it being noted as being redone.
That's being redone as part of the project.
Is that in this current numbers that we have, or?
Yes.
Okay.
For those of you that have walked to the Regent Theater or in front of City Hall, that is an area that is very much in need of, you know, being reconstructed.
I walk it every day, and it's terrible. I'm glad to see to get rid of Lake Hubbard Street. That's deep in there, I have to wear my hippers. That's an exaggeration, but...
Anything else? Anything else? All right. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to, uh, item five, discussion regarding fiscal year twenty-five council goals.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, uh, what we want to do is, uh, go over an update on where we are with last year's goals. And then, as you saw in your report, uh, we had the individual goals that each council member came up during the January strategic planning session. And then Michaela did a really good job. She took those and put them onto a graph that is, was out by your desks or your seating area this afternoon, so. To begin with, you know, our goals for last year were really broken into three categories. The first one is infrastructure and assets. Create a long-term maintenance and funding strategy for all city assets. That is something we have stalled on, um, but we are gonna pick up the pace, you know, in this quarter, you know, before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, staff is making a list of all those assets, as mentioned earlier during the Hubbard Street parking lot discussion. Identify a strategy for maximizing the value. Um, a subcommittee worked with, uh, Parker and Ryan on the Griswold and Regent Theater. We haven't really dove into the sports complex yet or the airport. I was out at the sports complex this afternoon. While it's off the beaten path, that still is just an area that just wows me every time I go out there. Uh, the DPW staff do a really good job maintaining it, keeping it up to date. And it's well-used, I mean, today this afternoon, obviously is well-used. There's a lot of, uh, people watching the solar eclipse out there, but it's, so it's a really cool thing we have in the city. The second category is economic development. Identify and promote areas in the city for the development of well-planned housing. As council is aware, um, we are entertaining, entering into a due diligence agreement with a developer to convert the Girl Scout property into a residential development. I have worked with Pete Borst, who owns Five Hundred Delano Street. A large tract, it's about eight, nine acre, eight to nine acres, um, off Delano. He now has a signed, uh, purchase agreement with Edwin Allen Homes to do a residential development out there. And this afternoon, I believe I signed the final bill for the rehab of two apartments at one oh-nine Locust Street. And the pictures look really good. So, we are always looking at ways to get more housing inside the city limits. We have limited land, as you know. So a lot of it, you know, is trying to convert second floors into apartments downtown. And then the two large lots that we had left was Five Hundred Delano, and then the Girl Scout property. There is some land off, uh, Thomas that a church owns that hopefully we can, you know, encourage them to release some of their land and, you know, allow it to be for housing. Uh, promote commercial industrial investment with a focus of expanding our footprint for industrial development. This past year, you granted IFT to Advanced Architectural Products for their expansion out in the industrial park. FCNA got a site plan approval for a new standalone building, um, over in the industrial park. And then I am in conversations with Perrigo Leadership about the sixty acres they own in this township just east of our industrial park. It was in twenty seventeen when they purchased it, it was gonna be a distribution center. Since then, they've constructed two distribution centers, not inside the city limits. So, I'm just gonna start having a conversation about, you know, what, you know, what that could be. Uh, industrial growth is needed. For those of you that knew Brian from FCNA, you understood their struggle to find land for their addition as their company was growing. Thank you. Uh, community development, uh, develop a code enforcement strategy. I would say that this is an ongoing process. Each time we go back to the table, we are sharpening the knives. And, uh, what I'm trying to say here is iron sharpens iron, kind of a thing. You know, we're not actually sharpening knives there. But, you know, we're, we're, we're getting better at this each time we discuss it. Uh, direct, uh, restart the residential rental inspection program. Council, you, uh, put that back in the ordinance or told staff to restart. It was already in the ordinance. Uh, we contracted with PCI. Uh, we have hit, we have stumbled coming out of the starting blocks on that, mostly because landlords are refusing to register their properties. We have about fifty landlords that have not registered their properties, and we are gonna start issuing tickets and taking them to court to force the registration in the next couple of weeks. Uh, Michaela and I have a meeting this Wednesday with PCI to talk about their processes. And then I have a meeting with a local landlord that's run into some issues on just getting their stuff registered. They sent in the check, and then the check got returned because they said it was the incorrect stuff. And they're like, Joel, can I just sit and have your ear for an hour? Just to tell you, all the things are wrong with the process. And maybe we can make it smoother for landlords. So, it's not so much the inspections or the quality, it's just the process of the program. Moving down, the developer communications plan. Parker and his team, you know, started doing a monthly newsletter. Last year, I would offer that it has not received the kind of use we thought it would be. So on social media, we can get impressions and see how many people are touching stuff, and it's just floating out there. We've shared it on all our social media pages, which do get a lot of impressions, but this just isn't getting off the ground. I think this is something we probably should talk about later at a study session to see how council wants to go with, what is a communications plan? You know, in your eyes, what are you really seeing to get accomplished there? And then I would offer that, as we have that discussion, we should be, come at it from a perspective of realism. And, you know, what, what's the story we're trying to tell? And is it a real issue, is it not an issue? Striving towards being a more environmentally conscious community. Uh, we did talk with Consumers Power about purchasing our power from, you know, their alternative energy sources. That wasn't something council really wanted to go down the path at that time. The electrical vehicle charging station, I did apply, and I did receive a seventy-five hundred dollar rebate from consumers to install one back there. Consumers is starting the planning for that. The problem is, we are gonna spend more than seventy-five hundred dollars for an electrical vehicle charging station. I'm getting estimates right now from companies, and we'll bring that back to council for, you know, a future discussion and see how we want to move forward with that program. And then, as Parker mentioned to me this afternoon, the roundabout is better for the environment than a four-way stop. Uh, less cars sitting, less cars idling, so there is a benefit to that. And develop a comprehensive wayfinding signage plan for all, for the all-aging community. That was accomplished this past fiscal year as well. So, what we'd like to do over the next few minutes is talk about how you want to take the goals that you each individually listed back in January and combine them into a document like what we hang on the wall there. As I mentioned, in your report, you saw the individual goals for every single council member. Michaela then took those goals and put them into the graph that is in front of you, as well as it's on the screen.
So do we just want to go down the previous goals and then look at the list that was made here and see how these are in the list, not in the list, or want to add them to the list?
However, council would like to do this. Uh, we also, I plan that there will be time on Thursday night this week during one of your budget review sessions to also, you know, dive into this as well.
So Peter, going off your suggestion, it might, if, if we, if we like the three areas that we have in our goals, to, to kind of look at each one and see where these fit. I, I don't know, we've got a lot of ones where only one person had it on their list, but we certainly have, we have three twos and one four and one five. So those seem like those...
Yeah, there's, there's also some in there that are like blight, ordinance enforcement and yard cleanup all fall technically. I would say that's all under code enforcement.
And so we could just check those off?
That we have. The trees in the right-of-way, I'm not sure if that's code enforcement or if we have to have a, an ordinance for that, or if we just have to enforce an ordinance. I want, I'd have to understand what exactly they mean by that. Um, the wayfinding is implementation, so under, if you go then to next... Because we already had the infrastructure, and we've been talking about this for a while, and I really do want to create a long-term maintenance and funding strategy for all city assets. And I don't think we've accomplished it, and I see that was still on our, our list here. Identified strategy for value of city-owned regional assets. So a lot of those were even in there, like the Griswold concerts, sponsorships. But we're still trying to wrap our heads around that. A lot of these also fall under like economic development. Like one-on-one Brady Hotel. Infrastructure maintenance plan, but that's under number one. Funding, that's... But yeah, there's, the, the bottom ones seem like there's maybe something there if we want to have it as a goal of any of those three. The dam is always, so that's always still been in kind of the long-term.
Well, the dam, uh, I think that the dam was the, uh...
The report?
The, um, repairs that needed to be done. But, I mean, HTC's on here, but that's already been dealt with, so.
I know we talked in number three to update to develop comprehensive wayfinding signage plan to just implementing on the number three, bottom one. And the communication plan, that has been on our goals, I think, the last two years, and we still haven't quite got it right. Or we just feel like it's working as well. Like you said, so what, was it a newsletter that we had that was just not getting much steam, or?
Yeah, I would say it was a monthly newsletter that staff put together, shared on our social media pages, as well as on the city website. And the impressions, you know, people clicking, people looking, just was not getting much steam.
And, oh, I don't really Facebook anymore, but, uh, the only other one I could think of is if, since the paper's free, a lot of people have been picking up the paper. If we had a little advertisement, a little QR, as a little small one to say, if you want to get a city newsletter, go here, and it would take them there, and they could get an email newsletter, or however they want to kind of get it.
Isn't Facebook an online newsletter? I mean...
Kind of, if you use it. There's quite a few people that don't use Facebook anymore. There's not as many as there used to be.
If somebody's gonna use a QR code, you gotta...
Well, a QR code or just something to say, here's where you can go to get our newsletter if you're interested. I don't know, just trying to think other ways to get people to see it. Other than, of course, email blasting or billing. And I don't know, have we done that with that one yet? As part of our water bill?
So we've listed it in our water bill. Yeah, we, we've directed people there, that route. We don't print off, you know, the newsletter and put it in the water bill.
No, I'm not saying print it off, I'm saying to direct. But how well is it kind of put in there? Is it just like a line of text? Is it something that's actually bold and something that people will see? Because...
I think it's, uh, there, there's a note section on the water bill at the bottom of the page. And some people read the water bill, some people have automatic payment. Some people just look at the number. I mean, there's not, I mean...
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if it's, if it's on the bill and it's just some little tiny text, they're gonna be like, nobody's gonna look at it compared to something that's actually a sticker or something bigger that somebody would notice that's out of place of their normal water bill, plus using, if we can use our email list that we have to, to try to get people to look at it, would be the other one that I would think. I'm just, you know, we have to figure out this communication cell, so I don't really want it off the goals, I don't know.
Are, are you, is council hearing from the, your constituents that they don't know what's going on with the city?
One tonight that didn't know that we got rid of the summer rates. So there's, there's definitely people that don't know what's going on. I have plenty of people that can't figure out the roundabout and that, the detours, even though that's been out on lots of places.
And that we're at the mercy of M.D. for those detours.
And I'll calmly, kindly remind council, we have people who tell us, when did the Regent Theater open back up? That is a monthly inquiry, and we're just like, it's been open forever. Please come support it.
Used to be all stores were closed on Thursday afternoons. That was back in nineteen sixty-nine. Not anymore, I still get that. Oh, you're open? People, they don't pay attention. You know, my father always said, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And that's exactly what we're going through right now.
How long is the newsletter?
Uh, newsletter is two pages. We haven't published it for the last three months. Correct, three months, it hasn't been published for the last three months, and we haven't received any, why haven't you published it? So we're looking at what would a quarterly newsletter look like? That's a little more robust. Other cities, if it's making people aware of, you know, meetings and so forth, which is what we're doing with our newsletter, other cities have invested the cost and did what's in the annual calendar.
Yeah, plain and well, has it?
And would just send out an annual calendar to all, you know, residents in the, you know, in the city that would like list information about the city, different departments, who to call for this, so forth. There's a cost to that, but... There's a cost to that, but we can run those, you know, we can get those estimates, we can look at that. Other cities, when I talked, when I reached out about, you know, my council would like to do a communications plan, really in-depth, three-hundred-page communications plans, also to one-page communication plans that was just a grid, that said, you know, if it's a public emergency, this is how you promote it. If it's this, this is how you promote it. If it's a community event, this is how you promote it. And had different levels of employees that did the promotions, like who was your public information officer? And that was their plan, you know, they go, it just tells us how to respond.
Yeah, you could look at a calendar, you could look at the rates in the newspaper to be like, what would it take to just put a small bottom half, what's the whole bottom half page cost? And just put the newsletter, put your calendar all in there, and then you don't have to deal with printing or distribution. See if that works. I don't know, it's just ideas how to maybe get better communication. Is there anybody else kind of on these goals have any input, like what we want to adjust? Are we just going to wait till Thursday to kind of come to a conclusion on it?
I don't know that anybody is going to want to extend our third meeting of the week on Thursday. I'd rather...
If, if you'd like, staff can take a stab at all of this, send out a draft through email that you could respond, you know, back to staff. That's how we've done it in years past, too. And we've changed some stuff after council looked at and said, no, that's not the wording we want, we would like it to read this way.
Are we talking, is that, you, are you talking about with us prioritizing what we've got here, is it, or with us writing out how we think it should be worded? What are you suggesting?
So what I think is we can take what's on this graph, put together what we think your goals are, you know, trying to synthesize some of the stuff here, as, you know, Mayor Perot, Tim Hand said, there's a handful of ones that are, there's some synergy. We can grab those, put those together, and bring something to council for you to review. If you'd like to prioritize this, we could just send an email out to council, blind copy you, and have you reply back to Michaela, here's my top four for next year.
What do we think? Are we going to say something?
I'm just really looking for that long-term maintenance plan. That one's been on the goals for a few years now, and it just never really seems to happen.
If you have an infrastructure and assets? And we didn't, do we have, did we have that on any of our goals here?
Yeah, it's right above blight, infrastructure maintenance plan.
Yep. So if we kind of see where all these fit together, and then that will be, that should still be on that list so we can see how council wants to prioritize that and get that on, because I mean, Peter's chiming in saying that he thinks that that's a, a priority of his, and I could see others of us stepping into that as well, so maybe we can see how we put that into that infrastructure and assets.
I'm kind of fine with them just taking what we've kind of have here. There's some of these that have synergy, which would then, instead of just being a one here, like yard cleanup and those, that's technically a two, because that's all under blight and code enforcement, or it's actually a three. There's like three of them that are individualized in there and just kind of be like, take our existing goals, we update them, send us out to them, send us out to them before that meeting, and we can make our, our final, is this what we all want?
How do we like that?
What Joel said.
Yeah.
Have the staff get us stuff together and we'll make the decision.
Teresa, what do, what do you think?
That's mine.
Yeah? You okay with that? Mike? Said yeah, instead of no?
Not sure.
Okay. Dave, are you, are you okay with that plan of action?
Um, yeah, yeah, I just want to see that long-term maintenance plan.
Okay. All right, so let's move forward in that direction. All right, moving on from council goals, we, number six, we have a review of the council agenda. Michaela, did you get any, oh, I guess we had, oh, that's in the minutes, we had an update, but no other changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I think Bill, for the minutes...
Yeah.
Bill, there's two amendments. One, that Teresa Galloway emailed us this afternoon.
Yeah.
And that's updated, and then Bill shared one as well.
Yep.
That hasn't been updated yet, correct?
Hasn't been updated.
So when you approve the minutes, motion to adopt the minutes with the following amendments.
Okay.
The one that's included, and the one that Bill's adding.
All right, and then we'll also need a motion to excuse Councilmember Andrus at that time. Add the amendment during the meeting, correct?
Correct.
Before you adjourn, is it, is the public closed? Is there any way to speak at all, or is that not allowed?
So we can...
Before they adjourn, just to address that, just to, I've got some really ideas that, um, yeah, and I should ask that question.
So we can adjourn, and then you, we'll be around for the, for those fifteen minutes between sessions, and we could, we can talk.
Or you can have open comment during the next session.
We do have public comment, the same way we did there, if you'd want to use that, sure. Yeah.
I did want to just touch on the plumbing contract and kind of the confusion around some of that. I, I guess from my perspective, it seems like best practice probably would have been to stop at that time in the meeting and do a roll call vote, right? And I, I think we moved past it pretty quickly, and reflecting on that decision later, it really stood out to me, this, it feels like we often do that as a council, where there's a staff recommendation, there's a little bit of comment, and then we move quickly through the voting process. And I think we would benefit a lot from kind of slowing that down a little bit at times, because I think we missed an important consideration that I, I'd like to get a little more clarity on, and that's the idea of preferring local vendors. I think it's come up a few times. I, I do believe there's a two thousand eight resolution that council had passed that kind of allowed for that preference of local vendors. I think from an economic development perspective, it's really important to keep local money local, even from kind of that green mindset, you know, not having somebody drive from Holland, I think is a good benefit. I, I don't know at this point if there'd be interest in re-exploring that decision just with new information about, you know, staff saying, well, we could have rejected all of those proposals because they all had flaws. You know, all of that's new information, I think, could justify it. But to me, the more important topic is that, like, we really need to be slowing down and taking the time to hear the input from other council members. And also, I, I really agree and appreciate Councilmember Galloway bringing up the notion of, yeah, we should probably prefer local vendors. If we've got a local vendor that's got a reasonable price that's bid on something, I think giving them preference makes a lot of sense.
Well, the, the vote that ended up failing, even though that was part of the confusion, but that actually was a vote for a local vendor, that was, we, we, we kind of...
Correct.
Teresa made the motion to...
And, and we all know...
Accept a local vendor.
Yeah, yes, and I thought that was great, and we all know the weight that staff's recommendation carries. I guess I'm bringing this up in part to go, did staff consider that local part? Because the, again, the price wasn't that much difference, and I don't know if Talsma's going to charge like an hourly rate to come from Holland, or if it's going to be a mileage or something, but that might be a consideration in that, too. But again, you know, trying to keep that idea of, are we preferring local vendors? Because, yeah, the motion was made, but it also failed.
Mm-hmm.
And staff wasn't recommending a local vendor at that time. But then also this notion of, I'd, I'd really like to see a little bit more, it feels like at times like we get into a discussion as a council, and then we go, okay, time for the vote. And it's like, boom, now you got to decide. And I think that feeling of rushing through things doesn't always serve us well. So just an observation about that. But then, yeah, discussion about local preferences. I mean, if you're saying, yeah, we should prefer local vendors, I'm agreeing with you on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I am, I just, I just want to clarify that, that was, the attempt was made to, to go with a local vendor, and then we couldn't pass it.
Yeah, yeah, and so does that failure imply that we're not preferring local vendors? Or...
Oh, yeah, I think it was just a strange...
Yeah.
I don't think it does.
No.
Because it was brought up, the local vendors, Teresa brought that up, and so everybody had that consideration, so that's, I don't see that as part of it. There's always just a dollar and cents half of it, too.
Yeah.
So if something fails, it fails, but, yeah.
But the question remains, do, do we give preference to local vendors? Is that a thing that we care about?
We can, but I don't think it makes necessarily that we have to give the contract to a local vendor.
No.
No matter what, so that's what I'm saying, it's like, it still sometimes comes down to dollar and cents, so it's...
True.
But we can maybe give some extra weight to a local vendor.
Yeah, can that be part of our decision-making process moving forward? I thought it was a solid point, and, yeah, to your point, it doesn't always have to be a local vendor, but just kind of looking for that feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I would always prefer to use somebody local if that's a possibility.
Okay.
I mean, that's how I, personally, that's how I try to operate, is if I can hire somebody in Allagren, I try to do that. So I'd like to see us do that as a city as well.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing further, I will adjourn the meeting at six fifty, and we will resume the regular session at seven o'clock.
It is seven o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. It's actually seven oh one now. Call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Or roll call?
Yes.
Agenda, or attendance, there we go. That's the word I was looking for, sorry.
Councilmember Redding.
Here.
Councilmember Zeder.
Present.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Andrus.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hands.
Present.
Mayor Byrd.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Michaela.
Motion to excuse.
Doris.
Yeah.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Can all in favor please signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Zeder. If you would join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, item four A, approval of regular council meeting agenda for April eighth, twenty twenty four.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have, we have some amendments we need to?
No, that's the meeting agenda.
Oh, that's the admitting. That, I'm sorry, that's amendments. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Moving on to approval of minutes. Item five A, approval of study session meeting minutes from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four council meeting.
I move, we accept them.
Support.
All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
I thought we needed another amendment on there.
None of those.
Oh, okay, sorry, wrong one.
Regular.
Sure, aye.
There we go.
Come on, guys, stay with it.
It's a little discombobulated here. Item five B, approval for the regular meeting minutes from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four council meeting.
I have an amendment to that. Eleven E one needs to be yea, Morgan and Byrd, nay, Andrus, instead of my name.
On what one?
Eleven E one. That was the.
You were a yea?
I was a yea. You and I were the only ones that voted for it.
Oh, and Andrus was nay. Did you get that? Okay.
Yeah, I looked at the video, too.
And?
Yeah, that's it.
The other amendment is eleven D one.
Yeah. So with those amendments, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I support.
It moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Motion passes. Item five C, approval of budget meeting minutes from April first, twenty twenty four council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
I support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion passes. Item number six, special presentations and recognition by mayor or council. Item six A, recitation of the Arbor Day twenty twenty four proclamation. Do we have anything, a preamble to this at all?
Um, I did want to add that Doug Codsmann did let me know that in the memo as well as the proclamation, it says that we were, that we've been a member of the Arbor Day Foundation for, I believe, thirty seven years, but he informed me this afternoon that it's actually thirty eight. So I did correct that in the version that you have in front of you, mayor, but I just did want to note that for everyone else.
Thank you, Michaela. All right. Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind, water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide wild, habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products and byproducts. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the city of Allegan has been recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the past thirty eight years, and desires to continue its planting, tree, tree planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Roger Byrd, mayor of the city of Allegan, do hereby proclaim the last Friday in the month of April as Arbor Day in the city of Allegan, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's community forestry, forestry program. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden their hearts and to promote the well-being of present and future generations dated this eighth day of April, twenty twenty four. Item number seven, reading, first reading of ordinances and scheduling of public hearings. Item seven A, first reading of ordinance five nineteen to repeal chapter sixteen nuisances and amend chapter seventeen offenses, chapter twenty five, street sidewalks and other public areas, other public places, chapter twenty eight, traffic and motor vehicles, and chapter twenty nine, utilities of the city code, and scheduling, scheduling of public hearing and a second reading of ordinance five nineteen for April twenty second, twenty twenty four.
I'll take this. Thank you, mayor. As council as well, where all ordinances go through a two-step process at the city council level. You have the first reading and then during the first reading, you schedule the public hearing for your upcoming second reading, which will be on April twenty second, two thousand twenty four. This is what we believe is the final step of amending all of our ordinances for, throughout our code of ordinances. We started this project, you know, a little more than a year ago, I believe, with a city council subcommittee that met weekly with staff. And then we also engaged the city attorney as we made those amendments. Tonight, chapter sixteen is being repealed. Most of the regulations have been transferred to chapter seven, our building and property regulation chapter. Chapter seventeen offenses, we're removing most of the provisions that are duplicative, defined under state law. The police department's practice is to issue citations under the state law when possible because the prosecution of those citations is funded and handled by the county prosecutor rather than by the city prosecutor at the city's expense. Also in this area, we're going to add a new section seventeen dash three to indicate that all offenses are misdemeanors unless expressly stated otherwise. This is the opposite of the new presumption in favor of civil infractions that the council recently adopted as part of their revisions. We are adding a new section seventeen dash forty two to address nuisance gatherings. This essentially replaces, replacement for the current section that addresses disorderly houses. At your previous meeting, there is a question about our social district and could, you know, people hanging out be a nuisance gathering. There's a definition in this chapter that says nuisance is if someone can be committed involuntarily. So if you're doing something where the police can arrest you for what you're doing, you're a nuisance gathering.
Moving on.
We are going to revise the city's curfew ordinance to provide more robust exceptions. This includes an exception that allows minors fifteen years of age to stay out past curfew when attending community events at the fairgrounds. Curfew violations would generally be municipal civil infractions, but third offenses and subsequent offenses would be misdemeanors. We're going to replace current regulations on firearms and other projectile weapons to be consistent with new developments in the state and federal law. This was discussed at your previous meeting as well. When we reviewed these, I subsequently emailed council the two thousand and fifteen law that, or case law that the city attorney was referring to, as well as answered some of your other questions, such as definitions of approved range and so forth. Chapter twenty five, street sidewalks and other public spaces. We're going to clarify how public improvements are financed by providing that improvements benefiting specific parcels of land would be financed by special assessments. And then improvements benefiting the entire city are funded from city general funds. We're going to remove unnecessary language regarding the procedure for imposing special assessments. The procedure is adequately provided for in another, in other sections of the city code and charter. We're going to remove language that suggests that cost sharing for infrastructure projects can be mandated without a special assessment. This is a legally questionable proposition, so we're just going to go ahead and remove it. We are adopting M dot specifications for all infrastructure projects in the public right of way. We're going to make minor modifications to the wording throughout the ordinance for clarity and readability. You may recall, a lot of these ordinance amendments were just that, making things clearer to read for the public. We are going to provide for most function, provide for most functions to be performed by the city manager or designee under this order, so they don't have to come to city council every time they want to do something in the right of way. We are going to repeal section twenty five dash forty one, which included outdated and unnecessary definitions. We're going to provide concrete standards that could justify denying a request to perform work in the right of way that intended to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And then again, or, and then we're also going to repeal section twenty five forty nine, which provided that the requirements for construction in the right of way didn't, did not apply to the city. We're of the mindset, if we're going to make the public, you know, apply for the permits, then the city should also apply, apply for those permits. Continuing with changes of chapter twenty five, we're going to provide that all property owners have a duty to clear snow and ice from their sidewalks, abutting their properties, not just owners in commercial districts. We still intend to continue with our snow removal programs, but we just wanted to clarify in the ordinance, the responsibility. We're going to outline regulations for business activities on downtown sidewalks. This includes signage, sidewalk cafes, placement of sales racks and furniture. And then with respect to the Metro Act permits, we're going to remove requirements that staff file in annual reports regarding the use and disposition of the funds. This is a requirement for much larger cities, but small cities do not have to do this in the state of Michigan. Continuing twenty five, we are going to state that a right of way permit may be revoked if the work does not commence within six months. This was a request from Doug Codsmann in the past week that we should have an expiration on permits that he issues, so they just don't sit out there, you know, forever. Twenty eight, under traffic and motor vehicles, we're going to clarify the prohibition on bicycles, skateboards, and rollerblades in the city's downtown and make all violations of that prohibition municipal infractions rather than criminal misdemeanors. We're going to properly adopt the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code. The current ordinance references the UTC but does not clearly adopt it as the law of the city. We're going to adopt Michigan Superdrunk Law, which increases the maximum penalties for operating a motor vehicle with a blood alcohol content of point one seven or more. And we're going to expressly authorize the police department to tow vehicles at the expense of the owner when the owner has previously received five or more citations for illegal parking, illegal street parking. We're going to clarify language pertaining to the operation of the Parking Violations Bureau. We're going to authorize the city manager to waive the prohibition on yard parking subject to approved standards that require such parking to occur only on improved surfaces. We're going to repeal the requirement that snowplow operators obtain city-issued license. This repeal was recommended by the ordinance review committee. We're going to repeal the prohibition on the use of Jake brakes or engine brakes for semis. This is something that we cannot regulate in the state of Michigan. And we're going to remove the prohibition on riding skateboards, rollerblades, coasters, toy vehicles, or other similar devices in the public parking lots per the city council's request at your previous meeting. Under twenty nine, we're going to add a section that establishes the prohibition on destroying or tampering with city utilities. This section was originally located in chapter seventeen offenses. We feel it's better in here. At a previous, previous meeting, we talked about cross-referencing. It's still a staff's opinion that we try to stay away from cross-referencing in ordinances because when you make one change in a chapter, you got to go make sure you made the change in the other one as well. And it, again, it's also duplicative and we're trying to remove as much duplication as possible from our code of ordinances.
In your packet.
Sorry about that. In your packet, you did receive staff report. Michaela put it together for us, as well as a summary, a redline, a summary and a redline version for each of the ordinances that I just summarized on the screens. Tonight is just the first reading and the scheduling of a public hearing for April twenty second.
So we have conversation.
One question. In the section or chapter twenty eight, where we talk about bicycles and skateboards, and do you think we should include scooters and hoverboards? As I was driving up tonight, you guys were probably sitting here. I seen a scooter go flying down the sidewalk.
So are you talking about the scooters under power?
Yep.
Yeah.
Either or, really. I mean, even these kids nowadays, or people nowadays, can really get them scooters moving with their feet.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm just.
I believe that the ordinance language on that.
the city attorney was referring to, as well as answered some of your other questions, such as definitions of approved range and so forth. Chapter twenty-five, streets sidewalks and other public spaces. Uh, we're going to clarify how public improvements are financed by providing that improvements benefiting specific parcels of land would be financed by special assessments. And then improvements benefiting the entire city are funded from city general funds. Uh, we're going to remove unnecessary language regarding the procedure for imposing special assessments. The procedure is adequately provided for in another, in other sections of the city code and charter. We're going to remove language that suggests that cost sharing for infrastructure projects can be mandated without a special assessment. This is a legally questionable proposition, so we're just going to go ahead and remove it. We are adopting M dot specifications for all infrastructure projects in the public right-of-way. We're going to make minor modifications to the wording throughout the ordinance for clarity and readability. Uh, you may recall, a lot of these ordinance amendments were just that, making things clearer to read for the public. We are going to provide for most function, provide for most functions to be performed by the city manager or designee under this order, so they don't have to come to city council every time they want to do something in the right-of-way. We are going to repeal section twenty-five dash forty-one, which included outdated and unnecessary definitions. We're going to provide concrete standards that could justify denying a request to perform work in the right-of-way, that intended to protect the public health, safety and welfare. And then again, or, and then we're also going to repeal section twenty-five forty-nine, which provided that the requirements for construction in the right-of-way didn't, did not apply to the city. We're of the mindset, if we're going to make the public, you know, apply for the permits, then the city should also apply, apply for those permits. Continuing with, uh, changes of chapter twenty-five, we're going to provide that all property owners have a duty to clear snow and ice from their sidewalks, abutting their properties, not just owners in commercial districts. We still intend to continue with our snow removal programs, but we just wanted to clarify in the ordinance, the responsibility. We're going to outline regulations for business activities on downtown sidewalks. This includes signage, sidewalk cafes, placement of sales racks and furniture. And then with respect to the Metro Act permits, we're going to remove requirements that staff file in annual report regarding the use and disposition of the funds. Um, this is a requirement for much larger cities, but small cities do not have to do this in the state of Michigan. Continuing twenty-five, uh, we are going to state that a right-of-way permit may be revoked if the work does not commence within six months. Uh, this was a request from Doug Codsmann, um, in the past week, that we should have an expiration on permits that he issues, so they just don't sit out there, you know, forever. Twenty-eight, uh, under traffic and motor vehicles, we're going to clarify the prohibition on bicycles, skateboards and rollerblades in the city's downtown and make all violations of that prohibition municipal infractions rather than criminal misdemeanors. We're going to properly adopt the Michigan Uniform Traffic Code. The current ordinance references the UTC, but has not clearly adopted as the law of the city. We're going to adopt Michigan Super Drunk Law, which increases the maximum penalties for operating a motor vehicle with a blood alcohol content of point one seven or more. And we're going to expressly authorize the police department to tow vehicles at the expense of the owner when the owner has previously received five or more citations for illegal parking, illegal street parking. We're going to clarify language pertaining to the operation of the Parking Violations Bureau. We're going to authorize the city manager to waive the prohibition on yard parking subject to approved standards that require such parking to occur only on improved surfaces. We're going to repeal the requirement that snowplow operators obtain city-issued license. This repeal was recommended by the ordinance review committee. We're going to repeal the prohibition on the use of Jake brakes or engine brakes for semis. Um, this is something that we cannot regulate in the state of Michigan. And we're going to remove the prohibition on riding skateboards, rollerblades, coasters, toy vehicles or other similar devices in the public parking lots per the city council's request at your previous meeting. Under twenty-nine, we're going to add a section that establishes the prohibition on destroying or tampering with city utilities. Uh, this section was originally located in chapter seventeen offenses. Uh, we feel it's better in here. At a previous, previous meeting, we talked about cross-referencing. It's still a staff's opinion that we try to stay away from cross-referencing in ordinances because when you make one change in a chapter, you got to go make sure you made the change in the other one as well. And it, again, it's also duplicative and we're trying to remove as much duplication as possible from our code of ordinances. Sorry about that. In your packet, uh, you did receive, uh, staff report. Michaela put it together for us, as well as a summary, a redline version, a summary and a redline version for each of the ordinances that I just summarized on the screens. Uh, tonight is just the first reading and the scheduling of a public hearing for April twenty-second.
So we have conversation.
One question. In the section or chapter twenty-eight, where we talk about bicycles and skateboards and, do you think we should include scooters and hoverboards? As I was driving up tonight, you guys were probably sitting here, I seen a scooter go flying down the sidewalk.
So are you talking about the scooters under power?
Yep.
Yeah.
Either or, really, I mean, even these kids nowadays, or people nowadays can really get them scooters moving with their feet.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm just.
I believe that the ordinance language, um, on that says something along the lines of and like devices. So my.
That's what Joel just read in the, I'm sorry, that's what Joel just read in the parking lots, but I didn't see that in the other one.
Yeah, so bicycles, skateboards, rollerblades or any similar device, section twenty-eight dash one. So in your PDF packet, it's on page fifty-nine. And it says, "It shall be unlawful to ride skateboards, rollerblades, coasters, toy vehicles or other similar devices in the city's downtown and in the alley or on any sidewalk or boardwalk." For the purposes of the section, downtown means the area between Cutler Street on the north, Chestnut Street on the west, Calumsey River and Second, Second Interstate Streets on the south and Calumsey River on the east.
So I guess it's covered then, I mean.
Like, like devices is pretty broad.
Yeah.
It's broad. Um, one thing I would bring the council's attention is I just read that for like probably the twentieth time, but I just caught it. Toy vehicles. If we have a three-year-old and one of those little toy trucks kind of a thing. This, this is where, when we talk to the police department, discretion is their best tool in their toolbox. I sure hope we're not going to be, you know, grabbing a three-year-old on a tricycle and saying, you can't have a tricycle on your three-year-old.
If we don't mean those, what does toy vehicles mean?
I don't know.
Maybe that we, maybe that we need a better term than toy vehicles.
I wouldn't mind a hundred and seventy-five dollar fine, come on. The discretion's there.
You want to go on record with that?
Then I'm going to go on record, I would never instruct any of my employees to issue a fine to a three-year-old riding a tricycle. We will look the other way on that one.
It really comes down to if it becomes a problem, is usually what it comes down to is, they're out there running into people on the sidewalk and the parents aren't controlling them, we go to the parents and go, hey, we, our ordinance doesn't allow for this. Normally, we don't say anything about it as long as you're not causing.
That's a good point.
Problems on the sidewalk and hitting people and running into the street and all those type of things, so it gives that discretion to the cops to be able to do that.
And then for, well, Councilmember Galloway, sorry about that, let me throw that at you. I also think we probably could be a little more clear on the prohibition of scooters, especially under power. Which would take care of one wheels as well, which are the ones that scare me the most. But as you see them on the street, they fly down the streets. It's amazing how fast those things can go. And we don't want those on the sidewalks for sure. So I think we could address, just, just expand that definition, it's just adding a couple words and that won't affect this at all. Since we know those are very popular nowadays.
I did have a community member reach out to me, uh, they were concerned that the city wasn't going to be plowing sidewalks anymore based off the ordinance language.
We just bought a new sidewalk snowplower, so I'm guessing we're going to continue to use that. And, cause even though we're responsible, downtown businesses and residents are responsible, the city's still running their plow, the sidewalk plow, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think it was just some confusion because the ordinance.
Yeah.
Kind of puts that responsibility on the homeowners.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I'm a downtown, well, I run a downtown business and I always end up shoveling my sidewalk, cause I, oftentimes I get in before the plow comes, so I just get it done. But it'll get done eventually, I guess, one way or another.
That's good.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I don't know, uh, how we, how do we balance those two with its requirement to take care of your own sidewalk, but the city's going to come and do it. So why do I have to go out and do it?
Cause the city only does it like once a day, if you're lucky. And that does become a major problem for people that are disabled, that people don't go out and take care of their sidewalks in front of their house and they can't use the sidewalk and it's slippery and icy and nasty and I go out with my, and do the sidewalk down, actually a lot of times all the way down to the corner from my house, just because I know the plow does an okay job, but it does not scrape down to those sidewalks and get those really clear. It helps definitely in the heavy snow to clear it off, but I think some of the homeowners do actually have to start taking care of some of those sidewalks in front of their places. Not saying that they're the sole doing it, I wouldn't, the city, I think so, will go along and keep doing the, the plowing, but they don't go and plow all the sidewalks twice a day. They, lucky if they get around the whole town once, especially in the heavy snow, so. I'm fine with the language update, it just clarifies that word, that the city's not the only one responsible for the sidewalks, the homeowners are as well.
As someone who walks year-round, I appreciate the work you do in front of your house, it's noticed. I know who's, who shovels their sidewalks.
That's why I go up the hill too, up to the neighbor, cause it's a pretty slippery hill.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, anything else on this? Uh, so we need a motion to, uh, to schedule a second reading?
Yes, in a public hearing.
In a public hearing.
Make a motion to schedule a public hearing and a second reading?
You have a second? It has been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Moving down to item nine, public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment?
Roger, seven B.
Sorry, I missed it with the, I apologize. I missed one.
You missed one?
Yeah, I'm under the, the paragraph of, that was seven A, I apologize. Item seven B, request to adopt resolution twenty-four point one zero to schedule a public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-four special assessment role on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll take the report on this one. So the report that was included in council's packet, um, it's basically no different than the one you received on February twelfth. Only difference is you'll notice on the second page, um, the city assessor did certify those numbers and, uh, my signature is on there as well, um, for having received it. Um, so at this time, we're just asking council to, um, schedule the public hearing for this special assessment role, um, to be scheduled for April twenty-second. And once council has adopted the resolution, um, per our ordinance, that's what it requires to schedule that public hearing, um, then I will send a notice to the paper and our ordinance also requires that each property owner, uh, that will be receiving a special assessment be sent a notice as well, so I will get going on that once council adopts this resolution.
All right. Do we have?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty-four point one oh.
I support.
It has been moved and supported, all in favor, Dave?
Yeah, I had a question about the new sewer lateral and the sprinkling line, is that standard practice to put that as special assessment? Seems like we would just charge for requested services.
These are just delinquent invoices, um, that were not paid, um, by the due date. So if we have some sort of payment arrangement, um, because sometimes, you know, in the case of getting another meter for a sprinkling line, we do work with people and allow payments toward that invoice. So if we don't have a standing, um, arrangement where we are receiving payments, um, we would essentially only put that type of invoice on here if we've just received radio silence on that.
Okay, that helps me understand, thank you. I guess another point that I would want to be careful with on these is making sure that we're careful about how much we charge for these services and then if we're adding a fifteen percent interest fee, um, I, I think blight cleanup, it makes a ton of sense. Mowing, I worry, becomes like a little bit of a penalty game there. And there may be higher priorities for us to focus on for blight. But overall, you know, this stuff is done, we, we've done the work, we've got to charge these people, so I can support it, but those would be like oversight items I'd be looking at for this.
Good, thanks, Dave. All right, we have a motion and a support, if there's no other discussion. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Now. I don't want to make the walk up, the walk of shame. Uh, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, Curtis Clark, uh, live at, uh, Alleghan Dam Road. I saw on one of the slides that said, uh, I believe it was ordinance five nineteen, chapter twenty-nine. Is there like a big book with all of these ordinances and, and everything, with all these chapters inside of it, where can, and if so, where can that be found? And all of these ordinances, is there a, like a zoning committee or ordinance committee that creates all of these ordinances with all these chapters and are they here, created here in Alleghan or another location and you follow them or how does all that work?
Well, um, this is a public comment, so this is a time for you to talk and it typically isn't a, a conversation. So we'll, so we. I would say, all of this is contained on our city website.
It is on a city website. Okay, all right. And I was curious, when, when they create these ordinances, all of these chapters, is that something that was done by the city councils in Alleghan in the past or does it come from an outside location? Right here? All right, all right, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Okay. I want to, um, go back, I have a lot of ideas. I'd like to go back with a housing situation that was brought about and, um, I just want to point out that Alleghan Public Schools, you know, with their building project, will have three elementaries that will be empty coming soon. And, um, the property, the buildings, um, could be renovated and I think they should be frugally, the money should be frugally spent. But to make it the nicest possible for, uh, our people of Alleghan, um, that's, that's one idea, the property itself, I don't know, um, if it's earmarked, I have no, if, if we need to, uh, come up with, um, property values and, and how much is it worth and, and the cost and value for renovation, um, to bring about affordable housing, that is a major problem for young people. All people, you know, are in this area, uh, could, could really benefit, um, from those three properties, Pine Trails, Dawson and Westward, they will be empty. Another thing, um, I'm thinking about, um, I do feel discretion for children and we want to be a, uh, children-friendly city. I, I realize respect for elders and falling, um, and, but, but children-friendly is very, very important, we want kids to come down and, and, um, feel free to, to be kids, let kids be kids. And if they're, if they hurt somebody, then we'll talk to mom and dad, just like the good old days, talk to mom and dad, this happened, you could be sued or whatever, okay, whatever. I do feel, I've got a minute, um, our jail, a large jail that was voted down twice, but we have this big jail, jail, prisoners come from all over, um, but when prisoners get out, there is nothing for them in our city, in our county, there's no, they have nothing. I don't know how we can be, uh, struggle of Jesus, uh, be respectful to our young people that are incarcerated, that want to improve themselves, um, type thing. If there's some, I mean, we're talking about fifty thousand for a, a design for the J C Park, yet our prisoners come out, these young people who are back, they have nothing. And I'm also very concerned about the large amounts of money in our city, um, that is taxpayer, I don't, it's coming from the taxpayers somewhere, somehow people are paying for it. Also want to point out, I want to ask for another minute of continuous respect to the, I need another minute. I do see that there is a, state of Michigan, where the Michigan Department of Labor has opened up a brand new, it's only a couple of years old, Economic Prosperity Rural Development Economic, I don't, can't remember the name of it, but they have a summit, the Rural Prosperity Department, they have three directors, finance, appropriations, they have three directors. Um, they are having a summit in Gaylord, May twentieth. And, um, I know it's rural, but we're, we're unique because we're a rural county, this is the county seat, we have a lot going on, we have seven cities, two villages and twenty-four townships and a lot of rural land. And, um, to get funding for possibly our housing that we, we have in the city, but can they make provisions for us? Because we're unique being a rural county, we have a lot of poverty, grassroots poverty, we're surrounded by it. And yet our people are hardworking and I will not disrespect the people of Allen County for their, because they live in poverty, um, that, and I'll say that and, um.
Okay, your, your time's up. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Jill Bentley, two fifteen North Cedar Street, right there on the busy corner. And my concern is, um, that the wording in the sidewalks where I would now be responsible for shoveling, um, heavy slushy, wet, salty snow that the plows throw in on the sidewalk all around the corner from the side of my house, which is not my property, it's the city property, but I still maintain it, um, not the sidewalks up until now, but the mowing and everything else and picking up the, the leaves, uh, which is a big task too. But I'm really concerned that, uh, I go away at Christmas time for three weeks and if no one's there to take care of it, I cannot afford to get fined for something like that. And I cannot go out there and shovel, I mean, on a fixed income, social security, I can't afford to pay anyone either to shovel that whole sidewalk. And up until now, uh, the city has done a wonderful job keeping it clean early in the morning, I hear them, believe me. Sometimes I think Lori's out there at five or six AM, she does a beautiful job clearing the sidewalks and it's just, I think a lot of people, especially with the added corner, it's going to be a huge hardship on a lot of people, including myself. So I would like to have you guys at least, I know, it might be okay for you, I have a shovel in my back. I don't have a, a snowplow or, uh, you know, uh, anything to clear the sidewalks and that's, that corner is heavily, especially with kids going to school and stuff, um, the way they, they, uh, plow that slush on the crosswalk there, there's no way that I can keep that clean. So I would like to have at least you guys think about that and maybe reword it or think about the heavily traffic parts, cause a lot of the city area, you know, residential, they don't have the snowplows coming by at, you know, thirty-five miles an hour, just throw, it almost hits my house sometimes, that slush. And it's just, there's no way I can keep it clean, so if you would please reconsider at least some of the areas, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Anyone else, public comment?
Jacob Tilgen, three two three North Walnut Street here in Alleghan. I'm going to back her comment, live on a busy road, uh, I pay a ton of money as far as I'm concerned in taxes, got a special house, in my opinion, really liked the house, cost me three thousand nine hundred dollars a year to ensure that house because of the replacement value and what everybody thinks that house is worth. Anybody and their brother could have bought that thing. Now you're telling me I've got to maintain the, the city sidewalks, which was done when I first got here and I'm going to get some fine if I don't maintain those city sidewalks. It's not my responsibility. Everything continues to get pushed on the homeowner. Last Friday, I had a sewage problem in my backyard and come to find out now that it's my issue that I've got to deal with. I think you're still working through some of that stuff, but how much is enough? Got to pay for the city sewer, got to pay for the sidewalks, on top of all the ridiculous taxes, plus the insurance value for the house, I mean, you guys are driving a lot of people out of town. plus the insurance value for the house, I mean, you guys are driving a lot of people out of town. So, not just me, neighbor two houses down, she's moving to Ohio. They have her taxes up over five grand on a fixed income. That's nuts. Minor seven. It's nuts.
Thank you.
Not Sogatuck or Douglas either.
Anyone else?
Hi guys, Joe Leverance, one-four-eight Mill District Road. Uh, just a couple of things. My concern, I looked over the proposal for the property that's gonna be developed over at the Girl Scout plant. I know we had another, um, project that was possible, submitted, who backed out. But their project brought in a lot of, um, I'm not gonna say low income, but, um, affordable rental properties for our senior citizens and for our veterans. And this new project is gonna be all for, for sale houses, which a lot of these folks aren't gonna be able to afford. And we've heard this quite a bit from other people here, that Alleghen is desperately in need of affordable housing. And a lot of people can't afford to buy a house. And I know that, that contractor who's looking at this property now has asked you guys if you had some input or some recommendations. And I would love to see you guys say to them, we would like to see some portion of this be, um, affordable housing for senior citizens or veterans who are on fixed incomes. Because it's, it's crazy. The, the prices of everything is crazy. Aside from that, um, going over your ordinance, I think it was twenty-eight, you talked about the bicycles and stuff on the city sidewalks. I didn't hear you mention the splash pad. So is there a special ordinance about you can't ride your bicycles or scooters or anything on the splash pad? There is, is there a special, or is that included in twenty-eight that wasn't mentioned?
So splash pad is part of the riverfront parks, that would fall in the river, uh, park rules.
Okay, very good. Other than that, thank you guys very much, you're doing an awesome job.
Thanks, Jill. Anyone else for public comment? Alright. Moving on to item number ten, written petitions and reports from special committees. We have item ten A, a request from the Friends of Alleghen's Oakwood Cemetery.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're just, do we have any, anything, do you have anything to say before?
Oh, okay.
Amanda, welcome to the podium.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Well, um, this is our eleventh year of planning the, uh, cemetery tour. And I just wanna make sure I've got permission to have it again at your property, so wanna respect that. I apologize for being a little delayed this year, I've had a lot going on, so. Any questions about what we do at the tour or what we use the money for?
Would you state your name for the record?
Amanda Strickfate, I'm sorry.
Does anybody have any questions for Amanda? Nope. Alright. So then, uh.
One thing staff will add, is they're also requesting to place a sign on the fence like they do every year.
Yep.
And then if you haven't ever participated in the tour, it is one of the coolest things I've ever been a part of. It is a real neat thing and I encourage city council to buy a ticket, support the friends. They do a lot of good work in the cemetery and you learn a lot about Alleghen's history by going to this.
Thanks, Jill.
And Parker's one of our actors this year. But it's top secret who they are.
So we need a motion.
I so move.
Support. It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So item ten B, a request from Alleghen County Agricultural Society.
I will take this one, Mayor Byrd. Um, this is a revision to a request that the city council received from the Alleghen County Agricultural Society. Uh, that is the group that operates the Alleghen County Fairgrounds. Um, they come to you with an annual request to place some signage, uh, throughout the city, uh, to direct traffic to the fairgrounds. As it was, uh, you know, lost my train of thought there, excuse me. As I explained in the memo, um, this is a, an extension, if you will, of that request. Um, there are a number of events that take place at the Alleghen County Fairgrounds, not just the Alleghen County Fair. Uh, and with the detours and the current closure with the roundabout construction, they are requesting to put those signs up, starting tomorrow, they have an event, the Michigan Alpaca Festival. This is the second time it's taken place at the fairgrounds, uh, in recent memory, anyway. Um, on the thirteenth and the fourteenth, so they'd like to get those signs up, um, pretty quickly here. They've got traffic coming in, starting this week. And then it will continue to, uh, remain up throughout the other events and through the Alleghen County Fair.
Great, thank you, Parker. Alright, if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the request.
I second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item eleven, reports from boards, commissions, and city officers. Item eleven A, city boards and commissions and area agencies. Eleven A one, airport advisory board, uh, April meeting. Peter?
So, at this meeting, we were able to elect our chair and co-chair. Uh, unfortunately, we weren't able to do it earlier because we had a lot of cancellations in the meeting schedule. We were shown the proposed hangar fee increment. Didn't hear much issue with it, I think it's like five dollars for the hangar, so. Did a little talk about the tank replacement for the fuel tank and something that we're gonna have to start looking at, depending on the lifespan of the fuel tank and what we would be needing to do in the future on that. Also, we're, uh, putting a reminder out to clean up the grounds. So any of the people that are out at the property, if they see some trash, you know, be helpful, clean it up. Some point, the city will probably take the street sweeper around as well, but hey, don't just, if you see trash, pick it up. It's nice to keep your hangar area nice and clean. And we discussed about a mid-Michigan rental cars that Doug had found that maybe could be something out there. We've talked in the past about having a car at the airport. We've had them in the past when we had a, an operator. But since then, we've never been able to do it because of insurance issues. But there might be a car rental service that would allow for kinda having a car there that if somebody flies in, that they could rent it. That way they can get around. And that was about it.
Great, thank you, Peter. Item eleven B, finance department, eleven B one, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Peter?
It's requested that city council approve accounts payable in the amount of six hundred and seven thousand seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents and payroll in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and thirty-three cents for a total disbursement of seven hundred and thirty-four dollars seventeen cent, or seventeen dollars and eighty-one cents.
I move we pay our bill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item eleven D, water utilities, eleven D one, request to authorize a purchase order for Hamlet Environmental for two Vogelzang septic grinders, uh, for the wastewater recovery facility in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Yeah, this is for two grinders, one for each of these septic receiving stations. The current ones are J W C brand. They have, they do their job, but they don't seem to give the life they should be giving. On top of that, the representative for J W C stopped representing them last year in the state, so we'd have to work directly with the manufacturer in California. Um, we've had to do that in the past and it is not enjoyable, to say the least. So, um, talked with our engineer and he recommended that, uh, septic receiving stations, new ones are going with the Vogelzang grinder and, you know, recommended that we take a look at those ones. Contacted Hamlet and, you know, gave us a proposal. So that's what we're, we're looking to install, um, in the septic receiving. As mentioned in the memo, one is budgeted for this budget season, or this fiscal year, and one for next fiscal year. They gave us a little bit of a price, price break, if we get two of them right now and then we can just get them installed and done, um, instead of waiting, so.
Alright, any questions for Doug? Nope, if not, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order for two Vogelzang grinders from Hamlet Environmental.
I support.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Eleven D two, request to approve a budget adjustment for the winter biosolids removal from the wastewater recovery facility in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars. Doug?
Yeah, uh, basically it comes down to, I didn't plan enough in our current budget to remove all of our biosolids. We typically remove three times a year, um, summer, late fall, early winter, and then late winter, early spring. And just with the additional septic we've been taking in, um, you know, we gain it, we get more each year, the industrial byproducts that we get, get in, um, we just generate more and more biosolids. It compounds because our digesters have limited capacity, so when we get more in, it doesn't give it enough time to work in there, so we can't de-water it, um, you know, like we used to. So we end up, we haul more biosolids, um, I guess is the endpoint, but part of it is because we cannot de-water it. So where we used to be able to apply four and a half to five percent solids, a lot of times now we're applying three percent solids. So it's watered down just because we don't have time to de-water it. End result is, we haul more and went over budget.
So do we need better grinders? Like how, how do we fix that problem?
It, it would be more digested capacity or equipment that would de-water. Not necessarily taking it right to a sledge press, but they can get stuff, get the equipment that, um, takes the three percent, uh, liquid to a ten percent liquid, which is still land, uh, pliable, but there's a lot less liquid in there. So it's a trade-off of you pay to land apply thinner or you pay for equipment to land apply thicker, so.
Gotcha.
Any advantage of using all of our ponds or a second pond that we're currently not using? To hold back so that the digester can actually de-water for longer?
Right now, we're using all of our digestion capacity, we're not using.
The larger first step.
Th- that's for aeration, that's for treatment of the sewage coming in, that's not for digestion.
Yeah, but I'm saying we're not currently using all three of those currently.
No, we're not.
Saying if you were using those, could that give relief to the digester?
No.
Because you would could hold it back.
We would actually compound it because we'd, we'd be generating that many more solids, um, waste sledge.
So, does this mean that we should cap our incoming receiving if it's causing this issue? Or look at it having the digester capacity increased?
So as far as capping, we're taking in, eh, we're taking in more and charging more per gallon than we are to haul gallon for gallon of biosolids. The amount, we took in nine point six million gallons of septic last year and twelve million gallons of industrial waste. So we are able to reduce that volume in our digester. It's just a matter of, we don't have time enough to reduce it to where we used to be able to.
Well, I guess, doesn't that make sense to what you were saying, Peter, of like, do we need more capacity in the digest?
Capacity or more storage in Big Blue? That's always usually my thing, is that Big Blue kinda caps out and that becomes a limiting factor as well.
Yeah, and I checked, I don't know, probably a couple of years ago, because talking with the manufacturer, the, the blue storage tank, some of them are designed that you can actually add panels to it and make it taller, essentially making it deeper. Ours, um, the foundation was designed to ma- max out where it's at. We could not add another five foot panel to it.
You answered all the questions on it that I had, which was, of course, is it costing us more to haul this away than it is for receiving it? And that's, of course, one of my concerns, so. That's why I would say you'd cap it, as if it's starting to cost us more to haul it than it is to receive it, then I'm not gonna take more in or I'm gonna have to increase the cost.
So straight with septic receiving, right now, we're at seven cents, we'll be going to seven and a half, uh, July one. Um, the biosolids are just over four cents a gallon. Um, so if the septic, if we're able to reduce it even by half, we're, there's still quite a difference in cost there.
Anything else for Doug on this? Not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjust the biosolids removal budget.
I'll support it.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, item eleven F, city manager and city clerk. Uh, item eleven F one, request to approve due diligence agreements with Intera Homes LLC. Doug, or, uh, Joel, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so in your packet was the staff report and the due diligence agreement between the city of Alleghen and Intera Homes. Um, this is a due diligence agreement to give them a six-month period of exclusivity. That can be extended for another six months by city council if necessary. The developer's gonna hold the city harmless, um, this is, uh, border plate language in all of our due diligence agreements. And then we are, we will enter into a purchase and development agreement if we elect to proceed with the transaction. Uh, this agreement's been reviewed by our city attorney. Um, the three-person subcommittee of Mayor Byrd, Mayor Protem Hands, and Councilmember Morgan have reviewed this. And this, uh, agreement has already been signed by the developer. So this is just the next step, uh, as we look at how we could possibly redevelop the Girl Scout property. To answer some of the questions, and Mr. Leverance isn't here anymore, part of this development is to include attainable housing, per the definition of the state of Michigan. So we are looking at, you know, creating, you know, some workforce housing, some lower-cost housing in this development. The developer is working on the TIF plan. I've shared that with the subcommittee, so we'll have a better understanding and we'll do a, probably a study session, uh, agenda item to review what TIFs are, how they work, you know, after we run it through the subcommittee. We'll probably bring it here to the whole council, so you're up to speed on that. And then they shared with me that they've made some minor tweaks to the design of the site plan that they shared with the council. That's probably the first meeting in March, March eleventh, I think, is when they presented during the study session. So they made some minor tweaks when they took into consideration what was said by some of the council members during that meeting. And we hope to share that with you in the upcoming months. Any questions for staff, sorry?
Uh, for the subcommittee, are you gonna be expecting, I, I know there's government incentives involved in this development. Are you, you're gonna be expecting like an economic impact plan that would justify those? Something to show, well, you, we're gonna capture this much in taxes. If they're not paying taxes, they're not paying their part for police, fire, ambulance, all that. How, how do we make up for that cost?
I think that's part of where I, I wanna see where that TIF plan actually lands. Like how many years is that? Cause that's one of the first questions I had was, is this a five years that the, the TIF goes on? You know, okay, five years, the recapture can happen pretty fast after that. If it's a third, twenty or thirty year, then I'm gonna, we're definitely gonna have some issues, so. First, I just wanna, that's part of, I think, on a upcoming study session, we're supposed to have somebody come in and discuss the TIFs with us so we get a better understanding where this would be.
Yeah, a- and I'm, I'm expecting, regardless of where it lands, if, if we're offering these incentives, can this company show me where the economic impact comes in? Not just, oh, we're gonna have more houses, but how, how does that, how do we recoup that cost as a community, right? And there is a cost, even if it's not us paying that money upfront, they're capturing it from taxes, that means those houses aren't paying taxes to us anymore than their time.
But they're paying for the, or paying for the streets and everything that we would have to do and get millages for.
But they're paying for the util, or paying for the streets and everything that we would have to do and get millages for, so it's kind of one of these. Either way, we would have to be paying for that if we wanted to develop it ourselves and put in our own streets, so it's.
I understand that, but there's still an added cost, right? Like, we'll maintain those streets, but then again, there's police, fire, ambulance, accessibility, maintenance.
That's why it's like, if it's like a five-year thing, I don't think that really comes into play much, cause most of that stuff, you're not gonna have any maintenance or any big added cost in that five-year period. But if it's a twenty or thirty year, then I'm gonna have some concerns that that's gonna be something. So I, I kind of wait to see where are those numbers landing? If those numbers are landing out twenty, thirty years, then yeah, I think we should have an economic impact and see how we would be able to, what that added cost would be.
Mm-hmm.
But I also always have to consider that the offsetting of the initial cost of the build-out isn't there, so. That does come into play on my consideration, is we could just take out millages, which would still have an economic impact on our tax. Cause we'd collect taxes, but we'd just be paying it all into these millages to pay for it. So it's, you know, it's, it's, one way or another, if you want to do a development, the roads have to get built. The only other way is that we just say it's fully HOA and those roads aren't ours at all.
Well, I think there is gonna be an HOA.
There's an HOA, but it's not an HOA for the, not to build the roads and the infrastructure.
Right.
So after it's done, it, of course, then becomes on the city and then it's, uh, that's why I do want to know what that TIF looks like.
Uh, and so, okay, so I'm hearing, yes, we'll have clarity on that and then economic impact assessment. Um, that's great. Um, my other question would be, do we have a policy in place for any developer that approaches us, how we kind of deal with these, or is this really like an ad hoc, these guys get this?
I don't know, I think this is the first time we've had a TIF, isn't it? That they've proposed a TIF? Have we done a TIF before? We've done OPRA's.
So you, the, the city historically has done pilots. Payment in lieu of taxes, I believe we have three payment in lieu of taxes programs. The senior housing here where the old Baptist church was got a payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, the development over off, uh, Hooker Road, uh.
Bridgeport.
Thank you, Michaela. You read my mind. Uh, they have a payment in lieu of taxes as well, and there's another one off Eastern that got payment in lieu of taxes too, I believe. Uh, we've done OPRA's before, as you've mentioned, when the Perrigo Outlet Store was created, um, that was done through a TIF program. Denny Sturgis is, was the developer, I believe, thank you. Um, so yeah, so, so we, we've done these kind of things, but we've never done this kind of TIF. I mean, the TIF program they're using has been newly approved at the state of Michigan. Uh, it's a Brownfield Residential TIF, as we've, uh, shared before uh, with council, you know, Allegan County over the next five years has a deficit of over six thousand homes that have to be built. And statewide, it's much larger, so the state has opened up their economic development toolbox to encourage or incentivize hous- the housing creation. In regards to economic impact, there's economic costs, which is what I heard a lot of, like, it's gonna cost the city for providing police services or additional fire services through the fire district or additional EMT stuff through our contract with, uh, Life EMS. Economic impact is what's the impact of forty new households shopping downtown? What's the economic impact to forty new households where there's an average of one point two kids in that, you know, per household? Going to Allegan Public Schools and what's, how, you know, the benefit the school receives from that influx of children coming to learn. Um, economic impact, you know, is the benefit to our employers that are in Allegan that need to hire employees and we're creating housing for their employees, so their employees don't have to commute in. Commute in from Cascade or Holland or Kalamazoo or Portage or something like that, but their employees now can live nearby and work nearby. So there is a discussion, I mean, I fully understand the economic cost to the city and yeah. I think it's something that the subcommittee will dive into. But the economic impact, the benefit to having this kind of growth, you know, there's a, numbers to that, that we can also talk about.
And, and yeah, I'm asking for both.
I just want to, yeah, I, I figured you were, I just wanted to make sure, cause it felt like we're going one way, I, I knew you were asking, I felt like you're asking for both.
Great, thank you. Um, and, and yeah, I, I think also that element of can every developer access these programs equally? So that we don't come back later with, I know there was another developer had come through, we've had other development proposals. How do we have something that we can go, this is our policy, when we have developers come, here's the kind of incentives we can offer? I think it would be helpful.
Now, this is a state program, it's not really administered by us, but I guess we could probably have a policy that we entertain TIFs as a development practice. But I don't know if we'd want a specific policy, like we accept all TIFs like this, or it's more just, we entertain all these, we, we, that's why we're in a redevelopment ready community, is part of it is that allows them, that access to those type of.
A- and maybe there's just some criteria that we've established, or if, yeah, we want to advertise, yeah, any developer has access to these and that's kind of implied in our RFP. That can be a communication when we've got these early development ideas, hey, good news. The city supports these programs that might be helpful in your development, if that's the direction we want to go.
I think it could be in the RFP that we're in economic redevelopment and all that, that goes along with it, and if a developer wants to use it, some developers don't. They just don't want to mess with the state.
I, I would just, uh, you know, capital writing's not far off, we just did this probably a year ago with the OPRA's. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, it was a twelve-year Oprah. Then, in the early twenty twenties, I think it was about a year ago, is when we said, well, wait a second. It's a six-year Oprah, and then if you do affordable housing, you can get another year. And if you're gonna do a mixed development, so commercial residential, you get another year. And if you're gonna do green building techniques, you get another year, but we capped it at ten. So for us to create those policies, this council's done that. Um, yeah, I just think when it comes to this new TIF, this new program. It's gonna, we're gonna have to understand it more before we create what those, uh, requirements are, you know, tightening downs. And then just real quick about, um, they're gonna be developing something, I have made contact with another attorney that does TIFs, and he does TIF reviews for municipalities, cause there is a niche market to this. And I'm gonna have a conversation with him later this week, early next week, we're trying to line up our calendars. And I want to bring him in just for a show and tell with the subcommittee, maybe the council as a whole. Just so you can be educated about this whole new process, cause I think it's new to everybody around the table.
And I would just like to say, I'm fine with going ahead and, and doing this, um. Yeah, whatever it's called, the due diligence agreement. But my concern in looking at that proposal that they gave us, the lowest housing on there I seen was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. How is that affordable housing? I don't understand how the city's gonna benefit from that, and it's not gonna help our community, I don't think.
Well, I, I, I was concerned too when I saw it too.
And I know that, um, you know, he was still gonna try and get some grants and stuff like that, but I just, I'm really concerned about the pricing, pricing of the development housing that he's, that they're going leaning towards. That's all.
I had that same concern as well when I saw it, but then I went and kind of looked through the real estate listings and I go, oh, this really isn't. This is what would be considered probably a hundred and ten percent or ninety to a hundred percent, ten percent, when I looked at the current cost. I go, this isn't exorbitant, these aren't four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars, these are reasonable in today's market, unfortunately. I don't like the market either. Like, it's ridiculously high.
And I think that's part of the problem, it, it may be comparable in the market, but is the reality that we're pricing a lot of people that need those homes out of those homes in this case. I, I think that's a valid point.
And.
Tricky one, but.
Something I'd like to do too, if it's a great council, I'd like to invite, uh, Ryan Kilpatrick, who was part of the MEDC, part of Housing Next. He really understands this housing arena, especially affordable housing. In today's dollars right now, housing construction is ridiculously high. You're looking at four hundred dollars a square foot. So just take the square footage in your house you have right now. Multiply that by four hundred and then ask yourself, could I build a new structure? And how unaffordable your house would be, and they have, they walk us through that process when we sit in these housing meetings. It is ridiculously high. I look at what I acquired my house for in like two thousand seventeen and what the going rate is now if I wanted to sell it. And I'm just like, it's weird. It's just weird. But we can bring in some of these people, you know, and then I encourage you to also look at new development that's occurring throughout the state or throughout West Michigan, throughout, you know, Allegan County, to see what those going costs are for new construction. This is new construction housing.
Yeah, isn't, uh, one of the sections is, I don't remember if it's the townhomes or the condos area. It's, the, the language used was not affordable housing, but it was.
The term nowadays is attainable.
Attainable housing.
Three years ago, it was workforce, ten years ago, it was affordable. It, the, the term changes every iteration, but it means the same thing.
Wasn't sure if they were changing the criteria for that attainable, but not sure, not sure who it's attainable for, but. It is, it's meeting what the state of Michigan, their formula for it. But.
And the other thing I'd just like to throw out there is, one of our biggest manufacturers in town is laying off people. Getting, not laying them off, terminating them.
Yeah, right.
Effective July, so I'm not saying they're the highest paying manufacturer, I'm not saying anything good or bad about anybody. I'm just saying that is one of our biggest manufacturers in town that we seem to be concerned about people commuting to, so. Again, I'm not against the due diligence, that I know that's what we're talking about, it's just some concerns that I have.
Yeah. It is concerning. All right, if there's no more discussion, uh, I would entertain a motion on this matter.
And will we accept the due diligence thing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. It passes. Uh, moving down to item thirteen, communications from city manager, council, and mayor. Joel, anything from you?
Yeah, so two things, uh, related to council's goals. I mentioned earlier. I applied and received that seven thousand five hundred dollar rebate from Consumers Energy for a potential electrical vehicle charging station in the Cutler Street parking lot across the street. Um, we're reaching out to those manufacturers and installers to get a price on what it would cost to install it. Um, there's some policy questions we'd have to answer here, such as, do we want to put that on a, what I'm gonna call a free meter, where people can just plug in for free? Do we want to hook it up to a wifi or cellular hotspot where they have to swipe their card? And then they pay the going rate for, you know, what we pay for consumers for that meter? Cause it will be metered, it'll be something we'll pay for as it's being used. Uh, but those are questions we're gonna answer once we get a total cost and decide if we even want to, you know, go down that path. Uh, talking about home affordability, um, one of the issues with home affordability is low-income homeowners and being able to afford improvements to their house, necessary improvements. Uh, water heater goes out, furnace goes out. As I've mentioned before, I am the chairperson for the Housing Stock Subcommittee of the West Michigan Regional Housing Partnership. This is a state program, they developed a housing plan in twenty twenty-three. They divided the state into several regions, region F, which is what our region is, is about fourteen counties. Um, the state of Michigan just announced their My Neighborhood Program. Um, where they've set aside just under thirteen million dollars for housing initiatives in West Michigan. For the past several months, I've been meeting with Lake Shore Habitat for Humanity and the Allegan County Community Foundation to start a homeowner, homeowner repair program in the city of Allegan. Um, there was some push trying to make it countywide. I was at every meeting saying, there's one municipality here, there's one municipality calling the meeting. You know, trying to pull you guys along. I understand that, you know, you're region focused, but maybe we can start off with just the city as a pilot program. You know, get our feet under us. Um, they've agreed to that, it appears. We're halfway through writing the grant. Uh, to ask for just shy, just shy of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, it will be completely run by the Habitat, um, they have the capacity and the track record to do home repair. Um, the city, through my office, we've agreed to support it through holding community meetings, marketing, and providing office space when necessary to meet with clients. So the homeowners don't have to drive to their offices up on the lake shore, but we could have them meet here, so. It's another part of that pie of housing issues in Allegan County. So we're hoping that we get that grant, that Lake Shore gets that grant, and we can start that program in the city. But it's another way that my staff and my office is, you know, trying to identify and promote areas, you know, for good housing. This isn't so much development, but it's preservation, and it's something we need a lot of in our community. That's all.
That's great, Joel, thanks. Parker, anything from you?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, a couple of events that are happening between now and your next meeting, uh, specifically within the downtown. Um, on April nineteenth and April twentieth, there are a couple of, um, Earth Day cleanup events happening. Uh, the nineteenth event is on a Friday, it's being organized by, uh, Perrigo. Uh, they are working with, uh, their employees, uh, to volunteer to come down and clean up along the riverfront specifically. Um, they want to focus on areas that kind of tie to the company, so they'll be starting out at the Perrigo Plaza splash pad and working their way down the riverfront along the boardwalk toward Plant One, cleaning up that area in front of Plant One. And then stretching along the Water Street boardwalk to reach the Perrigo Outlet Store on Water Street. So the, the, um, effort there will be just picking up trash, things, you know, that have accumulated over the wintertime. Um, garbage that might be lying about the, the boardwalk and that walkway where a lot of pedestrian traffic is. And then on Saturday, the twentieth, um, the Sassy Olive is organizing their regular Earth Day cleanup that they've done in the past too, and that'll be more of a downtown-wide effort. Um, and then the Spirit of Allegan Awards is coming up, uh, the Allegan Area Chamber of Commerce is hosting that at the Griswold, as you all know. Uh, that's on April thirteenth, um, it's kind of a, a recognition of, uh, businesses and individuals, uh, that have, uh, provided to the community over the past year, and is the chamber's annual effort to recognize those efforts. And then, uh, yeah, that's about it. Today, with the, uh, solar eclipse, it was really cool to see a lot of people out and about downtown, especially along the riverfront. Uh, Sherwood's Cove hosted a watch party, Tantric Brewing Company opened up an hour or two early. Um, there were just folks moving about, and there was kind of a buzz, it was neat to see that. And that, there were three locations within the downtown that were either selling glasses or handing them out for free in the case of the library. And they were all sold out or handed out by Friday, I think, so it was neat.
I missed my opportunity.
Many did, cause they ended up calling City Hall here, so with that being said, um, the next time, uh, Allegan will actually be incomplete in the path of totality in twenty ninety-nine, so I just want to go on record and let whoever is, uh, in the, my position at that point in time know that they should carry glasses at Allegan City Hall and maybe throw a little party on the riverfront.
Thanks, Parker. Michaela, anything from you?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Doug, anything from you?
Nothing further.
Teresa?
Um, I just would like council to know that I don't appreciate staff sending out a memo, memorandum stating that a council member come to them and lied, and that's basically what the memorandum said. Without any discussion, any further discussion.
Thanks, Teresa. Bill, anything from you?
Thursday meeting, what time?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
For some reason, didn't have that information. Other than that, I have nothing.
Dave?
Uh, we need a motion to fix the bridge. Remember, we talked about that earlier?
Uh.
Like the.
We want a motion to s- task the
Yeah.
public spaces with that.
Yeah, I believe it would be, I'll make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars. I'm okay calling it FY twenty-five budget, um, for the, to make it accessible to public spaces for planning to fix the Tressel Bridge. And it should be focused just on the Tressel Bridge, not the rest of J C Park.
Do you want that to be specifically to fix or to?
Do you want that to be specifically to fix or to fix or and or replace?
Fix and or replace, make it a bridge that people can walk across to get downtown.
Okay, is that, do we have that? Did you get that? All right, do we have a support for that?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion passes.
Thanks.
Is that, anything else?
Um, no, I mean, the comments from folks in the community, I think, um, again, we could probably improve our ordinance process, get them into open meetings. Um, you know, you had mentioned comparing it to the state. The state has committees that stand to deal with these new laws that come up, that have open meetings with agendas that are posted, often sending advanced copies to, um, interested groups, lobbyists, people who would be impacted. Um, there's a lot of communication and time. Government moves slow so that the community can catch up and provide input. Um, I, I think we might be running a little bit ahead of the community on some of these ordinances. And so, again, just wanted to offer that warning, I know I've brought it up before, um, but yeah, that's it for me.
Thanks, Dave. Mike, anything from you?
I was hoping that on a meeting basis, we could get information on what vacancies there are on committees. And get a, a current list of who's on these committees.
Yeah, we, we'll blow that out tomorrow. We can do that.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. Peter?
Nothing from me.
Uh, so, I would just like to thank all the public that came out and voiced their opinions on various matters. We always appreciate that and like hearing from the public. And, uh, seems like I was gonna say something else, but I don't remember what it was, so I'm just gonna let it, I know everybody's, sorry, I'm gonna stop talking, but, uh, that's all I have, so if there's nothing further, I will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty. Thank you.